Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, we ask you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruption throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, we ask, please do not approach the dais. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. I'm Councilmember Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This afternoon, I'm joined by Councilmember Moya, Showman, Carr, and remotely by Councilmember Caban. Today, we are scheduled to hold four votes and then five hearings, so we have a full agenda. The first vote concerns LU's 18, which seeks to terminate the restricted declaration recorded against the property located at 88-08 Justice Avenue. The second vote concerns LU's 24 and 25 involving the expansion of Jennings Hall in Brooklyn. The third vote concerns LU's 26, which consists of the 21-17 37th Avenue rezoning proposal. The fourth and final vote concerns LU's 27 and 28, which consists of the East 94th Street rezoning proposal besides these... All right, everyone, we're going to switch to the hearings first before we continue on the votes, so I'm going to pass it over to Committee Council.
Thank you, Chair. I am William Vidal, Council to this Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. For those of you here in chambers, please see the Sergeant at Arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. When you do submit your speaker card, please make sure to indicate the project that you're speaking about. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit instead of appearing before the Subcommittee in person, please email it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair as Councilmembers may have questions for you. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Council. The first two hearings will be about the residential development in Astoria, Queens. We will then hold a hearing on the 341 10th Street Development Proposal in Park Slope, Brooklyn. The fourth hearing concerns a proposal for a multifamily residential development in Gravesend, Brooklyn. The fifth and final hearing concerns a large mixed-use development in Willets Point, Queens, involving a new soccer stadium, affordable housing, and hotel. I will now open up the first public hearing on pre-considered LU's relating to the 30-11 12th Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Caban's district in Astoria, Queens. This proposal seeks a rezoning that would involve the mapping of a mandatory inclusionary housing to develop a mixed-use residential development. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit a written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Council, please call the first panel for this item. Oh, before I call, Councilmember Caban, did you want to give any remarks regarding this item?
No, I'm just prepared for some questions.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
We've been joined by Councilmember Hanks and Councilmember Villas. Council, can you please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, Chair. The first panel consists of Richard Lobel and Michael Beavis.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Lobel.
Mr. Beavis, you need to turn on your microphone just going forward. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and
Check.
and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you, and for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, please just restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Councilmembers, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. I'm joined by Michael Beavis, who is the project applicant, as well as architect. And on the phone, we have Noah Bernstein from AKRF, our environmental consultant. The rezoning today concerns 30-11 12th Street. Next slide, please. So, by way of a summary, we are seeking two actions. One is a rezoning to allow for the rezoning of existing R6B, R5B, and R41 zoning districts to allow for R6A and R6AC23. This is along 30th Avenue between 14th Street and 30th Road, as we will detail when we show the maps. And the second action, of course, as with all such rezonings, would be an amendment to Appendix F to allow for affordability in the form of mandatory inclusionary housing. We would seek mapping options 1 and 2. In addition to the development site, there are roughly portions or entirety of additional lots which would be included, which, again, we will show on the maps, located on Block 515 as well as Block 506. These actions together would allow for the development of a new eight-story, roughly 62,000-square-foot mixed residential and commercial building. The upper floors would have roughly 58,000 square feet of residential floor area with 80 dwelling units, of which roughly 24 under Option 2 would be permanently affordable. There would be roughly 4,600 square feet of retail on the ground floor and 3,200 square feet of retail storage in the cellar, and the building would contain 41 parking spaces, 30 for residential and 11 for commercial. The next slide basically just summarizes where we are in terms of the ULP timeframe. In November 2023, Community Board 1, after a full discussion, voted in favor of the project 24 to 7, finding that R6A density was entirely appropriate on the site. In November of 2023, the Queensborough President also held a public hearing and issued a conditional approval, and on March 6, the CPC voted to approve the application. I'll now just briefly go over some of the site maps as well as photos, and then, Michael, we'll just detail some of the project architecture. The next slide has a zoning map, which, as you can see in terms of the subject site, currently is divided between R6B and R5B districts. There are a plethora of varied zoning districts in the area. To note, though, there is an R6A district immediately to the northwest of the site, and the proposed rezoning would allow the lots along this intersection to join up with that existing R6A to give an R6A context to the entirety of this area. There are also, as you can see, commercial overlays along 30th Avenue, which would also tie in well to the project site as we would continue the commercial corridor in front of the development. The next slide is a tax map, which shows in red the development site as well as the adjacent lots, which would be covered now by a commercial overlay, again lending to the commercial character of 30th Avenue. The next slide is also a tax map, which shows the terminus of the rezoning area to the west, again allowing for an R6A district on these several lots to meet up with the R6A district already existing to the north. We would note that several of the sites, including the ones to the west, are already noncomplying, and so would become complying residential uses pursuant to this rezoning. The next slide is the area map, which really well demonstrates why this rezoning is entirely appropriate. Notice, again, 30th Avenue in the site, in front of the site at 80 feet wide, a wide street as per zoning, easily able to accommodate the additional density between the R6B and the R6A. In addition to which, you can see commercial uses and overlays along 30th Avenue in front of the site. Finally, the 12th Street and 30th Avenue intersection creates somewhat of an extra-wide area. Again, the site access is excellent to the site from both 12th Street and 30th Avenue. We also note the transportation options in the area, including the Astoria Ferry Terminal, which is roughly within a block and a half to the west of the site. The next several slides are photographs of both the immediate site as well as the surrounding area. Please page through those. You can see the general development in the area ranging between two to six stories. Again, the proposed building here would be within the context of that development. I would now hand the presentation over to Michael, who can discuss some architectural aspects, and then the entire applicant team is happy to answer questions. Michael?
Yes, starting with the site plan, it's a T-shaped lot of approximately 17,000 square feet. A footprint, 50 feet of frontage along 30th Avenue, turning down 12th Street for 100 feet, and then it's 150 feet of depth behind the adjacent lots. So, again, eight-story building of approximately 62,000 square feet, 80 units, over 40% of which are family-sized units. Next slide. So, the cellar plan consists of commercial storage and residential back-of-house spaces. The foundation will be wet and dry floodproofed with no critical mechanicals being located at the cellar. First floor consists of a corner commercial use group 6 of approximately 4,600 square feet, a mid-block residential lobby off 12th Street, an accessory parking garage to both the residential and commercial uses utilizing existing curb cut along 12th Street. The upper six floors, 2 to 8, consist of all the residential units. Floors 2 to 3, 13 units, mostly ones and twos. Next slide, 4 to 6, consists of 12 units, some studios and a mix of ones and twos. And then the upper two floors consist of nine units. And then the last slide, rooftop residential terrace amenity, which will be landscaped and include critical mechanicals.
If you can just forward to the last slide, which shows that one. So, again, just to summarize, we would have a site here composed of 17,000 square feet of lot area, currently vacant and historically underutilized and home to one-to-two-story manufacturing buildings. Given the residential uses in the area, it would be entirely appropriate here to allow for the proposed building and allow for both ground floor commercial use as well as residential above. And we hope that the Council will join with the overwhelming vote of Queens Community Board 1, the Queensborough President, and the City Planning Commission and approve the subject application. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Just to go back, is this currently in a floodzone area?
I believe it's in the 100-year floodzone, yes.
Okay, can you just go into that about how you're going to have sustainability? I know you said that cellar is going to be floodproof, but can you just go into that how?
Yeah, so all the critical mechanicals will be located above the designed flood elevation at the roof, not in the cellar. There's potential for resiliency in the form of emergency backup power. All the floodproofing measures, such as flood doors and deployable flood barriers, will be provided, you know, as needed. And then we plan to install a green landscape roof to help with stormwater mitigation and detention.
Okay, thank you. Could you please explain a bit more why you're requesting the R6A within the C2-3 commercial overlay opposed to another zoning district?
Sure, Chair. So, I think maybe if you want to put up the area map, if that's possible, the colored map to better demonstrate. So, the existing site conditions are such that there is R6B and R5 districts within the development site in this surrounding area. So, when you have an 80-foot-wide street, which is a wide street as per zoning, and particularly one as central to local transportation as this site, the R6A is seen to be an appropriate site, and we've rezoned many parcels within Queens along wide streets and even streets that were not as wide as this to R6A districts. That, coupled with the fact that there is an existing R6A you can see to the triangular portion to the northwest of the site, really demonstrates that not only is the R6A already within the district, but allows for an extension of that existing context. In addition, importantly, the prior R6A within the area was not developed during mandatory inclusionary housing since 2016. So, this R6A would carry with it an inclusionary requirement, allowing for creation, not merely of units, but also of permanently affordable units, which is why we think it's entirely appropriate.
Does the development company plan to expand the site with acquiring another adjacent property?
No.
No? Okay. What type of businesses do you intend to target for the proposed commercial space in the building?
We're looking for a local fresh food grocer.
Thank you. Councilmember Caban, I would like to give the floor to you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Obviously, we've met on this project a couple of times at this point. A few questions, none of them should really be a surprise. The application before the committee proposes both MIH Option 1 and 2. And so my question for you is, are you prepared to develop under MIH Option 1 if the Council modifies the proposal to remove Option 2 and ensure deeper affordability?
So, Councilmember, I'll start, and Michael can add if he chooses. Obviously, this has been a topic of conversation throughout our ULP discussions. We were very forthright with Community Board 1 in allowing us to map both options with the understanding in good faith that we would, you know, that there's a significant chance we would choose Option 2. And the Community Board, knowing that, approved this application overwhelmingly at CB1. I think that the discussion in terms of our analysis is looking at the surrounding area and understanding that Astoria Houses, being NYCHA Housing, has an 80% AMI cap, in addition to which other recent rezonings, such as Halitz North, you know, were projected under Option 1 and would create an overage of Option 1 options within the area. And so, the idea for the project site, again, we're merely asking for the opportunity to map Option 1 and 2, but the truth is that if we want to have an area where there is the full range of affordability options available, including for people who potentially would not be able to live within NYCHA Housing for being above that 80% cap, we thought that, given the modest number of units being created here in terms of 80 units, with potentially 24 affordable, that it would be appropriate for our site to allow for Option 2. Again, we're very cognizant of the Council and the, you know, the fact that the Council has a goal of creating affordability and deep affordability. But here, we looked at the surrounding area, at the range of options available, and for this limited application, that's why we felt strongly and we're asking for Option 2.
Well, and, you know, I appreciate the information you're providing around the Community Board and all those things, but like, very specifically, my question is, are you prepared to develop under MIH Option 1 if we modify the proposal?
Yeah, we're prepared, but, you know, there's a desire to leave both options on the table. The ownership group did meet with the Astoria Houses Tenant Association President back in December, Mrs. or Ms. Vanessa Jones-Hall, who supports Option 2. She expressed the housing demand in the community for higher-earning individuals and families. So, there is, you know, a desire in the community for Option 2.
And I will tell you, there's certainly a desire in the community for making sure that projects, whether big or small, are prioritizing MIH Option 1. So, the proposed development includes a relatively large, I mean, it's 41 space parking garage. So, I have a few questions, you know, I have a few questions based, like, pertaining to that, but just to provide a little bit of context. You mentioned that the ferry is a couple of blocks away. Also want to mention that the 21st Street bus, the express bus, is a couple of blocks away. That bus obviously goes down to Queensbridge, where you can catch the F. There's the crosstown bus, it's a five-minute bus ride down to the NW. So, certainly, the transit is not limited to just the ferry over there that takes you either, you know, further downtown into Brooklyn or across the river into Manhattan. So, you have these 41 spaces that are allocated here. Here are my questions. Are these parking spaces all required by the proposed zoning? Did you consider applying for a special permit to remove the parking requirements? And then finally, if the administration city of yes proposals are adopted, there would be no residential parking requirements at this site? And so if that occurs before you begin development, would you consider reducing the amount of parking?
Yeah, there's definitely a desire to reduce the amount of parking and even provide, you know, no parking, but what we're showing is the required zoning requirement minimum. So, the space is accessory to the R2 or the minimum amount required for the remaining market rate units, and the 11 accessories is the minimum for the commercial use. In terms of special permit application, you know, the desire is to start entitlements this year, construction starting in 2025 and wrapping up at the end of 2026. So, you know, time unfortunately doesn't permit a special permit to, you know, reduce or eliminate parking, even though that would be, you know, the desired development plan from the ownership group.
And I guess the other factor that we looked at is also pursuant to the city of yes proposals. There, as, you know, we've kind of discussed together, there is, you know, a likelihood that there would be a parking reduction at the site, given the current state of the amendments. Although we don't have the final text, to the extent that that did allow for a waiver of parking or elimination of parking, we'd be able to repurpose that space for other accessory uses.
Okay. I want to ask you a little bit just about the immediately surrounding area and some of the street curb infrastructure. So, the site is at this, like, really weird five-way intersection. So, I want to know if you're willing to work with DOT to design the builder's pavement plan for the site with as many pedestrian safety features as possible. So, features that could include, for example, like a bulb-out curb extension at the corner of, if you see there, at the corner of 12th and 30th.
Yes, absolutely. The development already plans to pursue or engage DOT for the BPP and the design of the streetscape and sidewalk. The community, you know, expressed the desire to help mitigate traffic by creating a loading area off 30th Avenue, because 12th Street is a one-way street. So, the plan was to engage and work with DOT on this project.
Great. And then my final two questions for you. The Welling Court area, it struggled with street maintenance sanitation issues. So, have you considered ways to address the conditions in the area? And is that something you could follow up with our office on?
Yes, exactly. Yes, certainly.
And then my final question for you is the Welling Court mural project, which is just like a really, really rich point of pride in the Astoria community. It facilitates street art on a lot of the building facades in the area. And so, would you be willing to commit to allowing street art murals on a portion of your development facade?
Yeah, no, we understand that this particular site in this surrounding context has been part of the rotating art mural gallery. And this redevelopment site is intended to incorporate and maintain the same community involvement.
Great, thank you. Chair, thank you for the time. Those are my questions for this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. There being no other further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who is to testify on 30-11 12th Street rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
No, Chair, there is presently no one signed up to testify in person or online, and we can go ahead with closing this hearing.
Thank you. There being no members of the public who is to testify on the pre-considered LU's relating to 30-11 12th Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items is laid over. I will now open the second public hearing on pre-considered LU's relating to the 23-01 Steinway Street rezoning, also in Councilmember Caban's district and similarly located in Astoria. The proposed seeks a rezoning that would involve the mapping of a mandatory inclusionary housing to develop another mixed-use residential development. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, with anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. I just want to state for the record, we've been joined remotely by Councilmember Salam. Council, can you please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, Chair. First panel consists of Richard Lobel, and, again, and, excuse me, gentlemen, could you please state your name for the record?
Kevin Williams.
And Kevin Williams. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony and in response to member questions?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, please just restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Chair Riley, councilmembers, good morning once again. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant in the 2301 Steinway Street rezoning. I am joined by Kevin Williams of GZA Environmental. We will be giving a brief presentation with regards to the land use items as well as environmental discussion, and then we're happy to take any councilmember questions. So, the rezoning before us is 2301 Steinway Street. Next slide. This is a rezoning to rezone corners of four intersections within Queens Community Board 1 from existing R5D zoning districts to R6A with a C24 commercial overlay. So, we would basically seek to add a C24 overlay for a depth of 100 by 100 on all four corners of Steinway Street and 23rd Avenue. This would facilitate the development here of an approximately 27,000-square-foot building, 3.6 FAR, with roughly 22 dwelling units and six affordable units, permanently affordable Option 1. So, in line with that, we are also seeking, as with all such rezonings, an MIH text amendment to allow for mandatory affordability to apply to the site. Next slide has the numbers behind the proposed development. Again, this would be a six-story building with 27,000 square feet. The base height would be 65 feet. As a corner lot, we're able to take advantage of greater lot coverage and reduced yards in order to reduce the massing of the proposed building to 65 feet. There would be typical setbacks in conformance and compliance with the R6A. There would be nine vehicular parking spaces, as well as 11 bike parking spaces for 22 units with six affordable units. The next several slides, including the next slide, show maps of the area. This is an existing R5D. There are both commercial overlays along portions of the site, but this would allow for a commercial overlay over the entirety of the intersection, which would conform with the surrounding character along both Astoria and 23rd, um, sorry, with regards to both Steinway as well as 23rd Avenue. The next slide is the tax map, which shows with more specificity the area of the proposed rezoning, again, the four corners of this intersection. And I think the next slide, which is the area map, really well demonstrates why this is entirely appropriate. We've got Steinway Street here at 80 feet, a wide street per zoning, as well as 23rd Avenue, which is a wide street. So, really, the confluence of two wide streets in this area, not entirely common, but definitely allows for the moderate step-up in density as requested at the site. In addition, there are prior rezonings within the area of the site that resulted in R6A and even R7A within several blocks of the site. Additionally, we are one block south of Ditmar Street, with, along with 23rd Avenue, are both major corridors within the area. In addition, the commercial uses that are already along this intersection will become complying and conforming with regards to the proposed commercial overlay. We would note that the existing property right now has a one-story auto body repair shop, as well as a restaurant within that area. The auto body repair shop is an existing legal use and a non-conforming use. So, the rezoning would allow for the redevelopment of the site with a mixed-use residential and commercial building, which is far more consistent with the local character. We are surrounded by residential properties as well as commercial uses. So, this would allow us to do away with an existing non-conforming auto repair use. The next slide shows with specificity the zoning change map, again, taking this existing R5D and allowing not only for R6A within the entirety of the zoning area, but also for commercial overlays as already exists to the west of the site. You can see on the next several slides, there are site maps showing both the ground floor commercial as well as the auto body on the second slide. commercial, as well as the auto body on the second slide to the to the bottom left. And again, the building typology in the area, existing three to four, five-story buildings within the area, the premises, the proposed six-story being entirely contextual. The remainder of the slides demonstrate an illustrative site plan showing the varied heights of the building at six stories, as well as a one and four-story portion towards the lower density district. And the remaining slides show the property in section, as well as typical floor layouts, allowing for parking in the lower level and a mix of one, two, and two bedrooms, as well as three bedrooms on the floors above. And with that, the applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard. This site was rezoned not too long ago in 2010 as an R5D, which allows two FAR and up to four stories. Did you consider developing as a right under the current RFD district?
So the R5D would indeed allow for four stories for residential. I think particularly on this site, there were two factors which really contributed to the request for the R6A. The first is that you've got an existing auto body repair shop, and the the opportunity to both eliminate the non-conforming use and redevelop is is something which is desirable, but we do have to remediate the site and remove any environmental contaminants. And so the additional costs which that engendered, really, the additional bulk allowed for the R6A would really make it more feasible. The second thing, of course, is that the R5D did not create any affordability. And so potentially, the applicant here would be able to take advantage of tax abatements, which although not currently existing, may be proposed. And so would allow the local area to benefit, both in terms of creating residential units generally, and also in terms of affordability. We would note that Queens Community Board One was overwhelmingly in favor of this application, looked at the applicant, who is a local business owner and has been a longtime resident of the area, and really was excited about the prospect of them remaining in the area and allowing them to redevelop the site.
And what type of business do you propose at the commercial level for this building?
So the discussion was around local retail, perhaps a a local fresh food store or eating establishment, something in that nature. But, you know, the square footage involved is relatively low. So, you know, they did want to do something that would contribute to the local commercial activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Caban?
Yes, thank you. Some of my my questions are going to be very, very similar, starting with the the first. Again, you know, the application being proposed is both MIH option one and two. And so, you know, despite the other conversations you have had or what you've heard from some other folks, my question is just simply, are you prepared to develop under MIH option one if the council modifies the proposal to remove option two and ensure that deeper affordability?
Councilmember, the applicant is so prepared.
Okay, great. And maybe I maybe I misheard this when we last met. I thought I thought the proposed development that you presented initially included a six-space parking garage as opposed to the nine. But but either way, the questions are the same that I asked of the previous project. You know, whether those spaces are required by the proposed zoning. Is, an additional question is, is the site small enough to waive out of parking requirements altogether? Did you consider applying for that special permit, which I imagine your, the thought process would be similar to the the last project? And then, you know, finally, if the the city of yes proposals are adopted, those text amendments, there would be no residential requirements at the at the site. So if that occurs before you begin development, would you consider eliminating the parking altogether?
Yes, councilmember, it's my understanding that as currently proposed, the city of yes housing opportunity proposal would allow for a waiver of parking here. And so that is something that the applicant would definitely consider. There's different considerations which apply here. It's really a very small number of spaces, given the size of the lot. But we would be happy to explore that in the event that the text is favorably inclined towards such waiver.
Great, and according to the application, this is my final question. According to the application, the development site is is, and you spoke about this, it's currently occupied by the auto repair business, a restaurant and two residential units. Are all of those spaces still occupied? And are the businesses and tenants aware that they're going to have to relocate for the construction?
Oh, so the the owner owns and operates the auto body shop, so they, you know, they are aware. My understanding is that the restaurant is currently not tenanted.
Okay.
And so so the wood, you know, the space is available.
What about those two residential units?
Yeah, I think that the the residential tenants are were under limited leases, and so those leases would be up well prior to any proposed development here. Again, this project would be a, would likely come under a tax abatement application as well. So we've got a long leeway as far as that's concerned. But, you know, I know that the owner maintains a good relationship with the tenants, and they're aware of the potential for redevelopment at some point in the future.
Thank you, and and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. We've been joined by Councilmember Abreu. There being no other further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who is to testify on 23-01 Steinway Street rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
No, Chair, there is no one signed up remotely or in person to testify as to this application.
There being no other members of the public who is to testify on pre-considered LU to the 23-01 Steinway Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the third public hearing on pre-considered LU's relating to the 34-4, excuse me, 341 10th Street rezoning proposal and special permit proposal located in Councilmember Villas' district in Park Slope, Brooklyn. The proposal consists of building two new residential buildings and rehabilitating an existing third building. Part of the development site is located over active subway tracks. This complex proposal involves multiple actions, including a rezoning and special permit. Today, we are holding a comprehensive hearing regarding the entirety of the proposal, but an additional public hearing will be scheduled for the two special permits once they are formally called up by the city council for review. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants at arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit a written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Villas to give any opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair. Whoops, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, possibly, to everyone. I'm Councilmember Alexa Villas, and I'm here to discuss 341 10th Street project. This application proposes to build, as the Chair mentioned, two new buildings at 341 10th Street, a site in Park Slope with an existing 17-story building surrounded by a parking lot and an open structure that spans the FNG subway tracks as they return below ground from the Ninth Street viaduct. As proposed, this project would yield 305 new units, 162 of which would be affordable units, with 100 being deeply affordable senior housing and family units, proposed to be developed by, with an HPD subsidy on the Ninth Street side of the site and a mixed-income MIH building proposed on the 10th Street side. The full proposal would also include the preservation and rehabilitation of an existing building through an Article 11 tax exemption. With market rate apartment rents well above $4,000 a month in Park Slope, Park Slope is a community in desperate need of affordable housing options. While I greatly appreciate the proposal of a deeply affordable HPD subsidized building on Ninth Street and the preservation of the existing building, as well as the applicant's ongoing work to address concerns and the needs of existing tenants, I continue to be concerned about the precedent of mapping an MIH workforce option in a community like Park Slope, where we must maximize opportunities for families to afford housing. We should be, as a city, building more truly affordable housing in communities like Park Slope that have access to transit, jobs, open space, and so many other amenities. The applicant, Stellar Management, is proposing to utilize the MIH workforce option in the 10th Street building and has proposed that 5% of the units be affordable at 70 AMI and 5% at 90 AMI and 20% at 130 AMI. Units proposed with quote-unquote affordability at 130 AMI are priced almost at market rate, over $4,000 a month for a two-bedroom. 130 AMI, in my opinion, is simply not affordable. And any development given, and, excuse me. We want to be sure that all the options are explored for a viable project, and I remain concerned about this AMI band that reflects more of upper-middle-class rental market, of which the city and Park Slope is completely saturated with. I believe we must push for deeper affordability to meet New Yorkers where they actually are without relying on such an option. I would like to thank the Tenant Association President, Rose Horton, and the rest of the association and tenants of 341 Brooklyn Community Board Six, the Borough President, City Planning Commission, Councilmember Hanif, who I inherited this project three months ago, but has worked for several years on, and my colleagues on the zoning committee in the council for their thoughtful evaluation of this proposal. I look forward to hearing from the development team, as we have been talking, and from my constituents at the public hearing in today's meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Villas. Counsel, can you please call the first applicant panel?
Yes, Chair. For a record third appearance. Straight in a row. No other than Richard Lobel, followed by Paul Healy, Benjamin Rubenstein, and Karen Hernandez.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel.
Paul Healy of Marvel.
Benjamin Rubenstein, Stellar Management.
Karen Hernandez, Stellar Management.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this subcommittee and in your answers to all councilmember questions?
I do, I do.
I do.
Thank you, and for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, please just re-estate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant. Councilmembers, Councilmember Villas, good to see everyone today. We're here today to discuss the 341 10th Street rezoning and large-scale special permits. I will be presenting with regards to the zoning and land use items. Paul will then discuss some of the architectural aspects of the presentation. Benji will then discuss some of the site challenges, as well as program. And then Karen will discuss some of the amenities that will now be available to the local area. So, next slide. What are we seeking to do here? There are four actions that are part of this application. The first is to change existing R6A zoning districts to R73C24, to change an existing R6A to R73, and an existing R6B to an R73 zoning district. As we go over the area map, we'll talk about why it's particularly appropriate on this large site, which is adjacent to multiple transportation options, including on the block itself, as well as a street system, which allows for access by three wide streets on this block. The second action would be to allow for the R73 district to be mapped within this area of Community District Six, including an amendment to Appendix F, which would, of course, require mandatory inclusionary housing on the site with the options, as was previously discussed by the councilmember. The third discussion here, and the third action, would be a special permit pursuant to 74-743, which would allow for the large-scale special permit to alter certain height and setback requirements. Paul can discuss a little bit more with regards to his presentation about why it's important on this large site to have those waivers in order to be able to locate on what is a very challenging site built over an MTA tunnel. And finally, there's a special permit with regards to the reduction of required parking here for the existing development. The reduction would be from 77 spaces to 39 parking spaces and to waive all accessory parking spaces for the new market rate units, as would be permitted by the special permit. Next slide is the proposed development. What would be the sum total in terms of the resulting development here? We would create two new buildings. The Ninth Street building would be a building with roughly 76,000 square feet, a 17-story mixed-use commercial and residential building. This building would be 100% affordable and would provide approximately 100 dwelling units reserved for seniors and families. Again, this would cap out with incomes up to 50% adjusted median income. And finally, the 10th Street building, this would be a roughly 168,000 square foot building at 19 stories with community facility on the ground floor. This would provide roughly 205 dwelling units, of which approximately 62 would be affordable. Again, we have a lot to talk about in terms of the proposed affordability, which will be on some of the later slides. The next slide shows the project area, just to give context in terms of the surrounding properties and avenues. We note that Fourth Avenue here, on the recent Guanis rezoning, was rezoned to a C44D, including four portion of our block. C44D currently allows for a Flora ratio greater than would be permitted under the R8A equivalent, up to an 8.5. So there is intended development along Fourth Avenue that would rise to heights and really specifically bulks much greater than what is allowed at the existing site. That's why the choice of zoning district here in R73 works well. Again, we'll talk about that in terms of the area map. But you can see just from this picture, this eagle-eye view, that there is development in the area, which creates context here, not the least of which is an existing 18-story building on our block, which would set the context for our development. Next slide is the zoning map. Again, demonstrating the bifurcation of our site between R6A and R6B districts. One can note, again, the C44D along Fourth Avenue to the west on our block, as well as on a small sliver of the project site itself, as well as the C43A along Fifth Avenue here, an R6A equivalent. The site itself, R6A and R6B, although with no commercial overlay, and the commercial overlay would allow for commercial uses on the south side of Ninth Street here, along the project site, as we'll discuss when we see the area map. The next slide is the tax map, which shows with a little bit more specificity the site itself. One can see roughly 245 feet of frontage along Ninth Street and roughly 400, or a little over 500 feet of frontage along 10th Street here. Rather large site, which allows us to apply for the large-scale special permit. The next slide is the area map, which is mentioned earlier, really shows why this rezoning, from a land use perspective, makes so much sense. Again, you start with the C43A district on the eastern portion of the block. This allows for R6A and FAR with inclusionary or mandatory affordability, which would have allowed for 3.6, and the C44D to the west, which would allow for an 8.5, as discussed. The R73 here at the site would allow for a moderate FAR of 6, which provides an excellent transition as you go up the block from Fifth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Again, looking at the street system in the area, Fifth Avenue, a wide street at 80 feet wide, Ninth Street, a commercial corridor here at 110 feet wide, and Fourth Avenue, an extra wide street at 120 feet wide. This is a rare opportunity to allow for development on a site which is currently underutilized, and it's an appropriate spot to place these additional buildings. You already have existing context in terms of the 18-story building. You've got phenomenal transportation options in the area, two subways existing on the block, additional two subways within one block or three blocks to the east, and bus lines as well. So really, it's a, presents a unique opportunity in terms of what you can bring to a neighborhood on a site which is underutilized like this. I would now hand the presentation over to Paul, who'll discuss historical context, as well as some of the architectural challenges posed by this difficult site.
Thanks, Richard. My name is Paul Healy. I'm with Marvel. We're the architects and the urban designers for the project. This slide, the first slide, highlights the unique conditions of the project site that were created after the construction of the Culver Viaduct FNG subway lines in 1929. The images at the top show the condition of the site prior to its construction, which was a full city block with activated streets on Ninth and 10th, and at the bottom, after construction, a large tear in the city fabric with street wall voids on Ninth and 10th. Next slide, please. The image on the left shows the existing site divided by the MTA tunnel, which slopes down and under the existing 18-story building on 10th Street, which leaves large street walls, street voids on both Ninth and 10th. The image on the right shows the two proposed buildings restoring the street wall along both streets, completing the block, positioning the taller building elements towards the Fourth and Fifth Avenue corridors. The location of both buildings above the existing MTA tunnel dictates where the main elevator cores can be located outside of the MTA easement lines. Next, please. The Guanis neighborhood plan has rezoned the Fourth Avenue corridor, which now allows a maximum building height of 175 feet, which is just to the west of the site. Next slide. of the site. Next slide, please. A waiver is proposed for the Tenth Street building to allow structural trusses, which support the building to be located within the rear yard area, shown in orange. A waiver is also proposed for increasing maximum building and base heights, and reduce setback depth, shown in blue. Next, please. A rear yard waiver is also proposed for the Ninth Street building trusses, again in orange, and for the maximum base height and reduce setback in blue. Next, please. A waiver is also proposed to address existing noncompliance of the MTA cover on the existing residential building within the required rear yard area, shown in orange. Next slide, please. The proposed new construction will have a total floor area of two hundred and forty-five thousand square feet, two hundred and thirty-four thousand of residential floor area, six thousand five hundred of commercial floor area, four thousand five hundred of community facility floor area. Three hundred and five new dwelling units are proposed, a hundred and sixty-two of which will be affordable. The Tenth Street building will have two hundred and five units. The unit mix will be twenty percent two-beds, eighty percent one-beds. The Ninth Street building will have a hundred units. Unit mix will be fifty percent studios, twenty percent one-beds, fifteen percent two-beds, and fifty percent three-beds. And all unit sizes will meet or exceed HPD and zoning standards. Next slide, please. This ground floor plan, the existing MTA tunnel occupies a central portion of the site at ground floor level. The vertical circulation core is shown here in yellowy-orange. For the proposed buildings, have to be positioned outside of the existing MTA easement lines, which sets the massing. Next slide, please. There's a large proposed landscaped open space at second-floor level, which will be publicly accessible and accessible from all three buildings, and an accessible ramp from the street is provided on the Tenth Street side at the bottom of the slide. Next, please. This is a rendering of the second-floor open space with areas for seating, children's play, and community gardens. Next, please. This is the existing condition on the Ninth Street side, with a large street wall void, which is currently fenced off. Next, please. And this is the proposed building, which completes the street wall and activates the street with local retail and residential uses. Next, please. This is the existing condition on the Tenth Street side, a large void, again, in the street wall, which is currently fenced off and used for parking in places. Next, please. And the proposed Tenth Street building completes the street wall and mirrors the character and rhythm of the townhouses across the street and in the wider area. Residential community facility spaces activate the street at ground floor level. Next, please. This is a view of all three buildings looking west from Fifth Avenue and Tenth Street. Next, please. And a view of the Ninth Street building looking west from Ninth Street. Next slide, please. The proposed new construction will employ a range of sustainable strategies, including stormwater detention tanks and water fish and plumbing, an all-electric building with high-performance facade, and access to quality public transport, long-term bike storage, and the aforementioned high-quality open space at second-floor level. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. So, we can go to the next slide. So, as Paul mentioned and Richard mentioned, the site is quite challenging to build on, even in as-of-right conditions, and this kind of peels the skin off the building to show these large structural trusses that add both cost and complexity to getting something built here. Next slide. So, to achieve our goals of building a lot of housing on-site and providing meaningful affordability, we had to take a holistic approach to the site, looking at all three buildings combined, to be able to do so. So, we have a mixed-income Tenth Street building on the left there, a existing building, which will undergo an Article XI, be fully income-restricted again, and the Ninth Street building, which will be a hundred percent affordable for low, very-low-income seniors and families. Next slide. So, where we started four years ago was with MIH Option One, mirroring what had been previously approved in the Gowanus rezoning. That would have resulted in twenty-five percent of the new units, or seventy-six total units, being affordable. But four years later, through councilmembers and many, many community conversations with stakeholders like Fifth Avenue Committee, existing residents, Heights and Hills, and so forth, we've come up with a proposal that inclusive of new and existing units on the site, sixty-three percent of them will be affordable at a blended sixty-eight percent AMI. One hundred and sixty-two of them, or half of the new units, will be affordable, and an additional one hundred and twenty-five preserved. Next slide, please. And we also want to highlight the depth of affordability, the deeper blue, the deeper the affordability. Again, having thirty units at that deep affordability level with our starting point, with just mapping MIH Option One, to having over, to having one hundred and seventy-nine units being in that very low income level. Next slide, please. And again, these three buildings work together to create inclusive and extensive, a comprehensive way of utilizing MIH tools and affordable housing tools to really exceed what would otherwise be required with just the simple mapping of MIH Option One. With that, I'll pass it over to Karen. Next slide.
Hi, Karen Hernandez from Stellar Management. So, in addition to providing affordability, what this project does is that it gives us the opportunity to restore the community and turn it into a vibrant one. We want, oh. Can you hear me? All right, should I go? Okay. Karen Hernandez, Stellar Management. Okay, so in addition to private, providing affordability, what this project does is that it gives us the opportunity to restore the community and turn it into a vibrant one. We want to put our residents and the community first, and one of the ways that we're planning to do that is by creating a fifteen-thousand-square-feet shared open green space, as well as new amenities for both our existing residents and the new residents that they can share and enjoy together. Our vision here is to connect the residents from all three buildings together via the shared, via the shared space, in order to provide a sense of togetherness, belonging within a true commu-, within a true community. Next slide, please. What's really nice about this fifteen-thousand-square-foot space, also being referred to as a park, is that it's accessible from the street via those stairs and the ADA ramps, meaning that not only do our residents get to access this space, also our surrounding neighbors, meaning that now children, parents, high school students, college students, dog moms and dads can all come together in this space to form community connection. We have also partnered up with Heights and Hills, who is a local nonprofit organization that specifies towards senior programming, all which will also be held on-site. And I say all that to say that we are very committed to connecting the community together. Next slide, please. And we hope that that results in a diverse, multi-generational community in Park Slope. In order for us to make sure that we're providing that, we have, we had to identify the items that would best benefit the community's needs, and I have been working very closely with the Tenant Association and the existing residents to identify those items. A couple of those items, very high-level, are improved security, equal access to amenities and open space, building repairs and upgrades, all which are currently being worked on. To ensure that we provide just that, we have also been working with the Tenant Association and Fifth Avenue Committee to memorialize those items via a Tenant Association agreement and a community benefits agreement, that we are excited to say we're close to finalizing. So, with that, I conclude the presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers. We're happy to answer any questions.
If anyone is in here for the Willett's Point Project, if, which is the majority of the room, we're going to move you guys into the flow room, because we have over twenty people who want to testify on this project, and they're upstairs right now. All right? So, we want to expedite this and get you guys back in here. So, if you're for the Willett's Point Project, I'm just going to ask you to follow the sergeants to the flow room, and we'll get you right back in here, okay? Thank you. We're just going to take recess for one second, okay?
Wow. Oh, my goodness. Oh, this is so good. Oh, wow. Oh, wow. This is actually a funny picture.
Before, after.
Look, look. I was telling Benji, you really are the man. It's like, you just, it was like, Richard, it was like, Richard should just stay soon.
All right. Thankfully, this is it. There's one more matter, it's not much.
Okay, good. That was funny.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we go back into the testimony, I'm going to take a pause so we could do the So, starting with today's vote, the first vote is to approve LU's eighteen, which concerns the termination of a restrictive declaration. The restrictive declaration at issue is recorded against eighty-eight dash oh-eight Justice Avenue, which is located in Councilmember Krishnan's district in Elmhurst, Queens. The termination of the restrictive declaration would facilitate the inclusion of additional commercial and community facility uses in a recently constructed eighteen-story mixed-use building. Councilmember Krishnan is in support of terminating this restrictive declaration. The second vote is to approve with modifications LU's twenty-four and twenty-five concerning a proposal known as the Jennings Hall Expansion. The residential development proposal, which is located in Councilmember Gutierrez's district in Williamsburg, Brooklyn, consists of two hundred and eighteen affordable senior housing units. The first proposed action involves rezoning a residential area comprised of multiple zoning districts to a uniform R seven-X residential district with a C two-dash-four commercial overlay. The second proposed action is to map a mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which would require the applicant to include affordable housing in the proposed development. The modification is to remove MIH Option Two and add the deep affordability option, which is consistent with the other MIH-mapped areas in this part of the city. However, because the proposed development is for senior housing, MIH will not apply to this particular development. Councilmember Gutierrez supports this proposal as modified. The third vote is to approve LU's twenty-six concerning a proposal known as a twenty-one dash seventeen, thirty-seventh Avenue rezoning. The proposal seeks to develop a new seven-story mixed-use light industri- industrial and office building in Councilmember Juan's district in Ravenswood, Queens. The application consists of a rezoning, shh, the application consists of a rezoning from an M one-dash-one manufacturing district to a M one-dash-five manufacturing district in Councilmember Juan, excuse me, ma- manufacturing district. Councilmember Juan supports this proposal. The fourth and last vote is to approve with modifications LU's twenty-seven and twenty-eight concerning a proposal known as the East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning. The proposal seeks to develop a mixed-use residential development, projected to have approximately four hundred and eighty-six units, of which approximately a hundred and forty-six will be affordable, in Councilmember Menon's district in Yorkville neighborhood of Manhattan. The first proposed action consists of a rezoning from an M one-dash-four manufacturing district to a C four-dash-six and C two-dash-eight commercial district. The second proposed action consists of mapping the mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which would require the applicant to include affordable housing in the proposed development. The modification is to limit the MIH option to Option Two, which will ensure that thirty percent of the development are affordable units. Councilmember Menon supports this proposal as modified, and I would like to recognize Councilmember Menon to give her remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair Riley, and thank you so much for your support. After long conversations and discussions with the applicant, the East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning will be the first, I want to reiterate, the first mandatory inclusionary housing project for the Upper East Side of Manhattan. Since the subcommittee held their public hearing, a number of vital and important agreements have been reached, as height and affordability are generally viewed as mutually exclusive and a trade-off, but we insisted in our negotiation on both and were able to deliver the following. The proposed height of the tower has been reduced from four hundred and eighty-four feet to four hundred and fourteen feet, a decrease of seventy feet, or almost fifteen percent. Most importantly, the number of affordable housing units in the development has been significantly increased. Originally slated to include a hundred and thirteen affordable units, the revised plan we negotiated now includes one hundred and forty-six permanently affordable units, representing a twenty-nine percent increase in the number of affordable units. In addition, as the chair mentioned, the total percentage of units that will be affordable has been increased from twenty-five to thirty percent. In addition, we negotiated the following terms: a creation of a community construction task force composed of Community Board Eight, the local councilmember, and local residents. The task force will assist with suggesting appropriate noise mitigation techniques, address quality of life concerns, as well as suggest appropriate hours of construction. In addition, there will be efforts to enter into a lease agreement with a daycare or childcare provider to occupy and operate such a facility and a portion of the ground floor of the proposed development. Moreover, the developer agrees to work with city agencies to pursue, pursue housing vouchers in order to increase affordability within the proposed development. Also, the developer has an executed agreement with Local Thirty-two BJ with respect to building service workers in the proposed development, and should Albany bring back four-twenty-one A or some type of equivalent to that, the developer shall use commercially reasonable efforts to negotiate in good faith with the New York City District Council of Carpenters. We all know that New York City is in the midst of an ongoing affordable housing crisis, and these negotiated changes represent a significant step towards achieving a more equitable and sustainable future for our neighborhood that is in dire need of affordable housing. By working with the applicant, we are ensuring that this development aligns with the priorities of the East Side of Manhattan and Community Board Eight. I want to thank the chair again for his leadership and having me speak today, and I want to urge all of the members of the subcommittee to vote aye on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. Members of the subcommittee who have questions or remarks about today's item should use the raise-hand button if you're online, or just let me know here if you want to have any questions. Counsel, are there any councilmembers with questions or remarks at this time?
No, Chair.
Thank you. I now call for a vote to approve LU eighteen relating to the termination of the restrictive declaration recorded against the property located at the eighty-eight dash oh-eight Justice Avenue, to approve with modifications LU's twenty-four and twenty-five relating to the Jennings Hall Expansion proposal, to approve LU's twenty-six relating to the twenty-one dash seventeen, thirty-seventh Avenue rezoning proposal, and to approve with modifications LU's twenty-seven and twenty-eight relating to the East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning proposal. Council, please call the roll.
Chair Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Moya?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Ebru?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanks?
I vote aye on all.
Councilmember Shulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye on all.
By a vote of six and affirmative, no abstentation, and no negative vote, these resolutions are recommended to the Full Land Use Committee.
Thank you, council. We will, no problem, we will now go back to the three thirty-four, excuse me, three-hundred-and-forty-one Tenth Street rezoning, and thank you so much for your patience. So, just have three questions. Mr. Bernstein, I think you were elaborating to this, but if you could just explain a little bit more, can you explain how this proposal evolved over time, and why did you decide to shift from the original, originally proposing to MIH Option One? Thank you, council. Uh, we will, no problem. We will now go back to the three thirty-four, uh, excuse me, three hundred and forty-one Tenth Street rezoning. Um, and thank you so much for your patience. Um, so just have, uh, three questions. Uh, Mr. Bernstein, I think you were elaborating to this, um, but if you could just explain a little bit more. Uh, can you explain how this proposal evolved over time? Um, and why did you decide to shift from the original, originally proposing to MIH Option One, building to one a hundred percent affordable HPD-sponsored building and one building under the MIH workforce option?
Sure. Nope. I have it. Um, thank you for the question. So, we started off with MIH Option One because we were really drafting off of the Gowanus Neighborhood rezoning. Um, and we knew that an area like Park Slope uh would, would, would really, has a need for deep affordable housing. Um, when we presented this option to key stakeholders, uh, we were, we were tasked to, oops, sorry. We were, we were tasked to do better, and we then creatively thought if we could develop one building as uh, a hundred percent affordable building with very deep uh affordability, that could then exceed uh the MIH requirements. At that time, uh, that Ninth Street building was generating the MIH for the entire site. Um, and through talks with more stakeholders, council members, uh, HPD, we were then tasked to provide additional affordability on top of that, um, and that's when we introduced the workforce house, housing option um, to the Tenth Street building so that the Ninth Street building, which uh would be a hundred percent affordable, would not generate MIH requirements to the Tenth Street building. It's worth noting that the Ninth Street building is thirty percent of the floor area. That is going to be of new, new build floor area on the site, uh, and that we are giving that floor area to HPD at zero acquisition cost. And uh, one other thing that was kind of layered on somewhere in the middle, uh, was when we were speaking with residents uh, and, and, and other council members, uh, Councilmember Hanif, um, there was a request to do something for the existing units as well. Uh, and that's when we approached HPD for an Article Eleven, and that Article Eleven has evolved uh from being uh, a Method Two option where, you know, there would be some of the uh fair market, units would remain fair market, to being now Method One, uh, where every single unit in that building is, is re-regulated and income restricted.
And that's what you're using the Article Eleven for?
Correct.
Okay, that was my second question, so you answered that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, so, so we started off doing, you know, from MIH Option One, nothing on the existing building, to, to what we've proposed today. And again, we ask that, that it's, it's really viewed uh kind of collectively as one.
Okay. Um, last question before I turn over to Councilmember Vilas. Uh, did you discuss with the MTA the potential for incorporating a new elevator entrance uh to the subway station on the site?
Uh, yes, we did, and uh, they have submitted a letter uh to say, saying that they could not, there's no use for an easement on uh the site to put an elevator.
Okay.
Although we did approach them saying that we could, more than happy to provide one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vilas?
Thank you so much Chair. Um, okay, let's see. So, let's walk, uh, the application proposes a workforce option for the Tenth Street building, so let's focus on, on that. The Borough President has approved this application with the condition of removing the option. Has this suggestion been considered?
Yes, this has been considered, but um, this is not something that would then facilitate the development of, of the proposal as planned and as proposed with a hundred percent affordable Ninth Street building.
And what are some of the driving forces of why you would con, why, why you were not able to choose a various, a different option?
It's really the challenges of the site. The site itself um is so difficult and so costly to build upon, and we've, we've, you know, shared some of these, um, some of this information with, with your office, uh, that there's no, there's, there's really, y- you need to have some, some income there to then facilitate the building of it. Um, and when we then give away uh thirty percent of that building for a fully affordable HPD building, again, it's, it's just the, the trade-off there, it's, it's too much, and it's something that we would then, you know, not pursue, and frankly, no other developer would come in and pursue either.
Would you, um, do you know if this option has ever been used in Brooklyn?
Oh, sure. Uh, we actually were responsible for an application which mapped this option on Flushing Avenue in Community Board Three. Um, and uh, it was used in accordance with other options as well. So, um, you know, at the time, uh, there was an analysis, and I think that on selected sites, um, it's, it's less about the rezoning and more about the actual opportunity to develop a project and whether or not it's going to work, and I think, Councilmember, that, um, that here, I mean, given the, the uh history of the site, the fact that it's so challenging to build over the MTA tunnel, um, you know, we've been involved, as you know, in hundreds of applications, and we've only come to the council for, um, the workforce option, and I believe two. And this is one of the two, uh, applications, and I think they really need it.
Can I ask how long ago that was?
Sure, that was, uh, after the, um, creation of the program, so it must have been in two thousand seventeen. It was, uh, term of the Rose Castle rezoning.
I'm amazed that you remember that.
Thank you.
Uh, according to HPD's public information, rents at a hundred and thirty AMI range from approximately twenty-eight hundred for a studio to over forty-one hundred for a two-bedroom. Have you considered that the quote-unquote affordable rents that would be part of the workforce option are actually very similar to the market rate rents in the area?
We're more than happy to provide some additional market research, uh, but uh AKRF has, has sent us some information that just looking at a, a swath of buildings in Park Slope, the average including new and old, uh, for one bed is above that threshold for a two-bed. The average between ones and twos of split fifty-fifty is forty-six hundred. Uh, when you take into account the new builds in the area, for example, the Dearmar, which is right on the corner of the lot there at Ninth Street and Fourth Avenue, uh, the average between one and two-bed rents are fifty-eight hundred, uh, which is extremely high. Exactly. So, so we, we do feel that these, um, one-thirty AMI rents provide a, a pretty substantial, almost thirty percent discount to market, uh, and provide folks with rent protections and of, uh, being able to stay in that unit and not have to deal with the fair market forces that could, uh, you know, raise rents as we're seeing all over the city.
So, given, given that these units will need to be leased through the New York City HPD Housing Lottery, which is a very time-consuming process, um, that has a track record in other parts of New York City of discouraging moderate-income renters from applying, how confident are you that you can fill these units?
A hundred percent confident. Uh, we have done so at, at a similar-sized, differently-shaped building, um, in Greenpoint. Uh, we're actually, very frankly, we, we think the, the market rents are, are even lower than, than Park Slope.
So, let's, let's switch a little bit to the, um, the Article Eleven Regulatory Agreement. Um, how does the proposed Article Eleven Agreement lock in rehabilitation and preservation of the existing building?
So, the Article Eleven puts it into a forty-year regulatory agreement. That then income restricts any new resident that would come into the building. So, everyone who's currently living in the building would remain in their unit. Uh, however, upon vacancy, uh, it, there would be a process through the HPD lottery system that would income verify uh, according to the units, and, and, and there's, there's a whole detail HPD has where each unit has a specific, um, income limits and rent limits, uh, and be filled, uh, over time.
And can you further describe the scope of the rehabilitation and renovation proposed for the existing building?
Sure. We, we have budgeted millions of dollars for the renovation of the existing building. Uh, this includes, is not limited to, uh, replacing, uh, terrace doors to individual apartments, uh, fully renovating the existing lobby, providing additional security cameras, um, updating the community room and full, fully renovating that, uh, as well as looking at building systems and ensuring that everything like elevators, plumbing, roof uh, is all in tip-top shape, and where repairs need to be made, we will make them.
I'm sure this next question is a little bit of an over, overlap, but feel free to, um, further expand. Can you describe how Stellar is further addressing the concerns expressed by the current rent-stabilized tenants?
Chair.
So, I have been working very closely with the existing residents, um, not just the un-stabilized residents, but everyone over on the building. And uh, wh- what I've really been trying to do is, uh, keep an open line of communication with them so that they feel comfortable enough to tell us what their needs are, what, what they feel is missing, the repairs that need to be made, um, you know, improvements that need to be made by Stellar. And since I've been involved in working with them, um, I feel like we have done, you know, a lot of things to the building to make the residents happy, such as providing more security, uh, doing walkthroughs with the local precinct. Um, in this building specifically, there's a lot of security concerns, so we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that our residents feel safe. And as it pertains to building repairs, you know, some of the people are here, we have great staff, uh, the super is great, and, um, we will continue working with them to make sure that everything else that they have asked for, uh, is given to them.
I certainly appreciate that, and just as a general statement, I would expect that this is the level of engagement that management would have on a consistent basis with their tenants, um, devoid of rezoning applications. In terms of the, are there any shadow impacts on the existing building showing by the, shown by the environmental assessment statement?
We, we have Alex Lieber here, uh, who can speak to that from AKRF.
So, we just had to swear in Alex for the record, so Alex, can you raise your right hand, please?
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Alex Lieber with AKRF.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth, uh, nothing but the truth in response to a question today?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so sorry, so the question was about, uh, the shadows assessment. Uh, so just to explain, um, I'm with the applicant team, AKRF, uh, we prepared the environmental assessment statement uh, for this project, uh, in coordination with Department of City Planning as a lead agency. Um, and we followed the guidelines of the CER technical manual, which is the requirement for, uh, for the environmental review. Um, the shadows assessment, uh, looked for, uh, what are considered, uh, sensitive resources, which are defined in the technical manual as, uh, public open space and, uh, hu- feature, historic resources with sunlight-sensitive features. Uh, the assessment, uh, did not find any of those sort of qualifying resources in the study area that would be, uh, hit by new shadows from the project, and so the conclusion was there was no significant adverse impact.
Can you define what significant adverse impact means?
A significant adverse impact is generally considered when, uh, a new shadow would, uh, substantially cover a resource for an extended period of time. Um, and, uh, or would completely eliminate, uh, shadow on that resource. And again, those resources are public open space where a shadow might, you know, uh, just make it less usable, less, less attractive, uh, or a historic feature to a, uh, or a feature of a historic resource that depends on sunlight. Um, that's, that's the standard for a significant adverse impact.
And this would be, um, the study, uh, looked at all angles of the new development, including where the existing building is?
Correct. It looked for any resource, uh, that would be potentially, uh, affected by a new shadow.
Got it. I think, um, I think that's it for my question, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Vilas. Uh, are there any councilmembers, any questions for this applicant panel?
No, Chair.
Uh, there being no questions, this panel is excused. Uh, council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on thirty, three hundred and forty-one Tenth Street uh, proposal remotely or in person?
Yes, indeed. So, we have two, we have two people online wishing to testify, followed by a good twelve to twenty people in person who want to testify.
Okay. So, members of the public will be given two minutes to speak, and, um, members of the public, we are sticking to two minutes. You're open to submit your testimony, written testimony to the council after, but we have a very long agenda. We have a lot of people upstairs, and we have a lot of people that want to testify today, so please, if everyone can stick to their two minutes, and I will be cutting you off at two minutes. Thank you. All right. Uh, please do not begin until the Sergeant-at-Arm has be, started the clock. Uh, council, can we please call the first, uh, panel?
Yes, so the first panel consists, so let me, just before we start with the first panel, explain how we're going to do this since we have people in person and online. Uh, we're going to start with a panel that is in opposition in person. We will then followed by a panel by in-person here present today, in favor, and go back and forth until all people in opposition in person have spoken. We will then switch to the online testimony, and then we will go back to in-person testimony. Hope that was clear. So, starting with the first panel, in-person, in-opposition, it consists of, and please excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Andrew, uh, Stalvent?
Uh, Saint Lawrence.
Uh, Saint Lawrence, uh, completely missed that one. Christina Juzaitis? And Ravi Sharma.
Thank you so much. Uh, we're going to begin with Mr. Andrew.
Uh, Saint Lawrence.
Saint Lawrence, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, good afternoon. Uh, oh, um. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'll start again. All right. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Riley, Subcommittee, Councilmember Vilas. Uh, thank you for having us today. Um, I also want to thank the Sergeant-at-Arms and the Subcommittee staff who worked very hard to manage the very large turnout in connection with this project. Uh, I'm just going to combine my remarks to the difficulties of the site regarding the MTA and the tunnel. Uh, that is, the site would be built over. As the Chair noted at the beginning of today's meeting, uh, this is an active subway platform uh, containing the F and the G train lines that service Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. Uh, the applicant noted the challenges, they noted that this was a difficult site a number of times. They talked about having to site the elevator cores, uh, over the streetscape in order to avoid interfering with the active subway lines. They noted the positive aspects of the access to the subway, uh, that this building would offer. Uh, what they did not comment on, or which I have not heard about, is the need to move thousands of tons of material and equipment over this active subway line over the process of construction. Uh, the applicant, uh, said during the Community Board Six meeting that this would be done by crane. I have some, some skepticism about that, but regardless of the manner in which that, that material is intended to be moved, there can be no question but that this is going to disrupt F and G traffic south of Smith's Ninth Street during the course of this construction project, which I understand will take years. Um, and I think that is an impact that either this committee, the, this Subcommittee, this committee, or the City Council Committee on Transportation should consider, uh, in deciding whether or not to go forward with this application. Thank you very much, that is my time.
Thank you. Uh, Christina?
Yes. Um, thank you for letting me speak. I'm not a professional speaker, I'm a visual artist. So, um, I brought some visual aids. First of all, a, a lot of, uh, the schematics show these beautiful renderings. The truth of the matter is that Ninth Street is wide, Fourth Avenue is wide, Fifth Avenue is wide. This is Tenth Street, this is looking up from Fourth Avenue. You can barely fit, I mean, you can't fit two cars, and it's not a two-lane road. It's a tiny street, and I think there's barely enough room for a, a Amazon van or a delivery truck to get through. I don't understand what's going to happen during construction, but even with three hundred additional units, it seems an impossible burden for Tenth Street to, to get that kind of capacity. Um, while, um, Stellar was, um, submitting their application, I've been living on Tenth Street for fifteen years. I'm a homeowner there. Um, I've been documenting, um, and timestamping my iPhone photos. This, um, photograph was taken on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Six-foot-high garbage dumps. You can see by the car and the scale in front of their existing building. That stayed there. By the way, they don't pick up garbage until Mu- um, Mondays. It was picked up on Monday, three days later. This is chronic, and I'll submit an email with a lot more photographs to you to consider what this does to our neighborhood. It's brought, we've been complaining about it for 15 years and talking about the vermin and the stacks of rats that appear on the road. And it's been terrible. And if this is the reputation, I hope that you'll consider thinking about this and making sure that there's a binding agreement for, a real binding agreement for responsibility to the Park Slope neighborhood. We're not Gowanus. We don't have huge lots. Anyway, finish. Thank you.
I was really enjoying your presentation though. Thank you. You had me into it. I was really into it.
Is this one on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Riley and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Ravi Sharma and I'm a Ninth Street resident for over a decade. I strongly oppose the 341 10th Street rezoning and LSGD special purpose applications by Stellar Management. I urge you to deny these applications for the following reasons. The applications request, represent an unprecedented zoning changes, previously only considered for large-scale projects on condemned railway and surrounding business property in Hudson Yards, Manhattan. The applications represent as close to spot zoning as allows, overriding well-established zoning regulations while out specifying Stellar's plans, exact plans for the location. The applications would negatively impact the surrounding historic district, allowing Stellar to construct an 18-story building towering over dozens of families, many mere feet away, creating noise, pollution, congestion, and unreasonable safety hazards. The applications do not actually address the need for affordable housing. Stellar has a poor record of maintaining affordable units at 341 10th Street and their details on the number of dur, and duration of affordable units expose a profit-driven, a solely profit-driven plan. Their proposal indicates that only 20% of the units would be affordable, but considering the suspiciously large amount of proposed studio and one-bedroom apartments on Ninth Street, reveals the affordable units would consist mainly of studio and one-bedroom apartments, which is contrary to the policy of creating affordable housing for families that need larger apartments. At the Brooklyn Borough President's Meeting, Stellar's representatives testified that they had not determined how they would construct a building over the subway station and residential homes. The lack of planning suggests that they may not be seeking, they may be seeking to flip the property for profit after obtaining a zoning change. The city should not assist naked profit-based initiatives, but only approve a real plan that can be achieved. While some building on Ninth Street as opposed to the residential Tenth Street may make sense, if the city believes that a zoning change is necessary, it should take a page from Hudson Yards and solicit bids from the best developer for the job and take the property away from its current owner since it's, since it is demonstrably not up for the job. The community benefit agreement must not be left to Fifth Avenue Committee, which represents business interests. And no one here is from the neighborhood for Fifth Avenue Committee and they do not represent residential needs of the affected residents or, or the greater neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi. Do we have any questions for this applicant panel? No questions. Thank you so much for testifying here today.
Thank you.
The next applicant panel will be called by the Chair.
All right. The next applicant panel will be, excuse me if I butcher your name, Alex Leager, Barrett Sloan, and Michelle Delas. Delaus. I'm sorry. Hey, Alex. All right. We'll start with you, Alex.
I introduced myself earlier. I'm Alex Lieber. I'm with AKRF and on the applicant team and I just registered to testify in case there were any other questions. I already addressed one during the presentation.
Okay. So we'll, we'll come to you after then. We'll go next to Barry Sloan.
Yes. I'm a resident there for 15 years at 341 10th Street. Was able to raise a son, get a good education. He has all the means for the sports and parks that he has needed. And I'm all for the building of these new buildings to bring in more families and make the neighborhood a lot nicer than just a bunch of parking lots on the block. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Michelle?
Doesn't want to move. Hi. Michelle Delaus, Executive Director of the Fifth Avenue Committee. And folks, I know many people know the Fifth Avenue Committee, but we've been around for 46 years and our mission is to advance economic, social, and racial justice. One of the ways that we do that is to build and manage affordable housing and organize folks. And we've been involved in a number of land use actions, helping to negotiate community benefits agreement. I just wanted to update the committee and of course, thank the Chair and Councilmember Aviles and other members of the committee about where things stand with the community benefits agreement discussion, because that's something that's been referenced in every step of the process so far in ULP. And I just want to say that there's good faith on both sides, both among the tenants association leadership and among Stellar. Many of the things that were, you know, mentioned in the Stellar presentation, I think that, you know, certainly this applicant team is committed to addressing a number of concerns of the existing tenants. And I know many people are here today to share, share their own experiences. I think this is an unprecedented opportunity to preserve existing affordable housing. And the fact that we're going to be re-regulating 38 units, which are currently market rate in the existing building in addition to building 100% affordable housing in Park Slope is very, very significant. I know that the council member and in general, the council have some concerns about mapping the workforce option. I too honestly would have concerns about that if it were that building alone. I think the reason why I personally have become more comfortable with it is the fact that we're preserving existing affordable housing, adding another 100 units of deeply and permanently affordable housing. And this is a very difficult and unique site because of the MTA. So I think it's really because of the uniqueness. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you. I actually do have some questions. So Alex, does Stellar currently own a building, one of these buildings? Or they just manage one of these buildings? They own and manage one of these buildings. So the concern from the previous applicant was talking about a lot of the quality of life issues over there. Are you prepared to address those issues with the new building that you're proposing? If you are permitted to build there?
So I should clarify that I'm not with Stellar. I'm not with the applicant. I'm on the applicant team.
You say you was coming, so I can ask you questions. So I'll ask you some questions.
So I can only speak to the, the environmental review aspects of the project. That's why we prepared the environmental assessment statement.
Can you go into that a little bit more?
Sure. So the, the environmental assessment statement followed all the requirements of SEER and it was done in consultation with Department of City Planning. They're the lead agency. And so we did a number of detailed analyses, what was required as we exceed the SEER technical manuals thresholds. So we did, we looked at it from historic resources, perspective, land use perspective, urban design perspective, a detailed pedestrian circulation analysis. The conclusion of all those analyses is that we did not have any significant adverse impacts, according to the SEER guidelines.
Okay. There's something wrong with those guidelines because there's obviously people there that are complaining about some issues. So I just wanted to state that for the record, if you guys can't address that. I know that you testified already, but there's obviously some issues over there still. I have no more questions. Councilmember Vilas, you have any questions? All right. Thank you. This applicant panel is excused.
Thank you.
We will now move to our third in-person panel in opposition.
I will be calling on Ira Robbins, Amanda Trotman, and Ellie Spicer. We will begin with Ellie Spicer.
Good afternoon and thank you for having us. I have recently written to Councilmember Aviles and so some of these sentiments are repeated here. I live on Tenth Street across from the proposed development at 341 10th Street, owned and managed by Stellar. Ah, yes, I'm the terrible homeowner. I have lived there for 35 years, raised my two sons, going to local schools. I watched 341 leave the Mitchell Lama program. I watched them change their, the constituents of, of their buildings. The neighborhood began to change. We were hardworking folks, making a living and sharing the community. And that building was very important since it was so large. And it, when it went out of the Mitchell Lama project, they wanted high-income clientele. They pushed folks out. They left the park, which is part of their property, which they're now touting, to completely disintegrate. They did not keep promises to their current tenants, who they are continuing to bamboozle into supporting this upscale project. I want to see greater affordability. Now, you fell over when you saw what the rents were, but those aren't rents that hard-working New Yorkers. I mean, I worked for the carpenters union for 30 years. I couldn't have paid those rents and I had a union income with benefits. Thankfully, I do have a retirement income and a pension, so I have that. But we need real affordability and I'm asking the council to stand up. I know they say they have one building that's 100% affordable. That's senior supportive housing. The other thing about this organization is everything has to be nailed down with an agreement. They don't keep their word. That's been proven for 35 years. They built their portfolio taking buildings out of affordable housing, Mitchell Lama projects, and making money from them. It's got to stop.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Ira Robbins.
Thank you. My name is Ira Robbins. I'm a retired senior citizen who has lived on Tenth Street for nearly 15 years, facing the proposed building. Tenth Street is not prepared for the addition of 200 new units in terms of the water supply, the sewer capacity, the electric grid or traffic, nor is it prepared in terms of garbage. The building Stellar currently puts, the building that Stellar has at 341 has 154 units. They leave garbage on the street every, twice a week in large piles of carpenter, construction bags. If, if they add 200 units to the build, to the block, that's going to increase the amount of garbage by 130%. Where is that going to go? It's, it's already taking up, it blocks the fire hydrant right there and it's a very frightening prospect to have more garbage piled on the street facing my house and my neighbors' houses. I also want to talk about parking spaces. I'm not a car owner, so I don't care one way or the other about this. But in terms of, of logic and common sense, they want to reduce the number of parking spaces from 115 to 39 while adding 305 apartments. Now, they're claiming that that's within regulations, which is fine, but it, it doesn't speak to what happens when the 305 new tenants come in with 100 new cars. So that's going to be a problem. And I've taken, I did a little research. I took a picture of a Google map, a Google Earth picture of, of the parking lots that 341 currently has. And it, my guess is that there's about 60 spaces occupied there. And there's probably, there's also an underground garage that they have in the building, which, let's just guess, they have 20 cars parked there. So that's 80, 80 cars that have to be parked somewhere and they're going to reduce those spots to, to under 40, which is a real problem. I mean, you know, it's going to be, I don't know where they're going to, think they're going to put these cars. So the rezoning requests before you are bizarre and aberrant and should not be allowed. As I understand, that zoning regulations exist to ensure rationality and consistency to development in the city. Stellar is asking you to make an extreme set of exceptions for them to throw up logic and long-held practice out the window solely for their benefit to build in a space that really doesn't exist. How will that serve our city? Thank you.
Thank you. Last, Amanda Trotman.
Hi, I'm Amanda Trotman. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Aviles, who in your short time in office have already brought stronger accountability and those great questions. I just want to highlight, they squirmed out of every single one and there's nothing documented to commit them to actually addressing any of your very important points. We own one of the townhouses on Ninth Street, but we also have a tenant who's 82 years old and pays $500 a month for a one-bedroom. There are 14 buildings full of multifamilies with kids and doctors on the block that are not mentioned enough in terms of the impact. We depend on you to protect us. I, I have a packet in front of you that demonstrates just the tip of the iceberg of the major safety hazards caused by Stellar over its long career, horrible career in New York City. Publicly documented negligence, irresponsible management, and cutting corners that has led to countless ongoing safety issues in buildings they run and even a construction-related death in a wall collapse at a Stellar site in Chinatown a year ago. The DOB had issued five safety violations that were not addressed in time to save that man's life. Stellar's rating on the Better Business Bureau site is D minus. I encourage you to look at some of the reviews. We are for building more affordable housing. My husband and I both work for a nonprofit that mentors youth. We want new folks into Brooklyn, but we want them taken care of, not by this bad actor. I want to finish by a quote from someone in a Stellar building on the Better Business Bureau site. Run fast in the other direction from this company. I have never dealt with such incompetent management. The building I live in has so many issues, it seems they manage their other buildings the same way. Bad plumbing. We can't even flush paper in our toilets. No hot water. They often cut the water without warning us. Bed bug infestation. They lose my rent checks and then charge me late fees for not sending the money. I would give this company a negative 10 rating if possible. I would definitely not rent again if the company in charge is Stellar.
Thank you so much. Do any councilmembers have any questions for this applicant panel? You are now excused. Thank you so much for your testimony. Now we're going to switch to online. I'm going to call on, I'm going to call on Hunter Walker, Carrie Bloss, and Robert Horn. We can begin with Hunter Walker. If you can hear me, Hunter, you may begin.
Starting time.
Hunter Walker, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Hunter.
Excellent. To the esteemed members of the Subcommittee, my name is Hunter Walker. I'm a lifelong Brooklynite who grew up on Tenth Street, starting in the 80s and lives there today. I've come before you to urge you to reject Stellar Management's application for a zoning variance on my block. There are so many reasons to say no to Stellar and they've made so many false statements. Two minutes barely covers it. I'm going to do my best. Our city is in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. Stellar has been a major enemy of affordable housing. Deleted versions of the company's website boast about the fact that Stellar, quote, "built its track record on repositioning of middle-income housing." How has that repositioning of affordable housing played out? Well, in 2019, a housing court judge found that Stellar falsely inflated renovation costs to overcharge tenants and destabilize affordable units. That business model has involved turning former Mitchell Lama buildings into high-priced rentals. That includes 341 10th Street. Those rents you were all so shocked to see are being charged by Stellar right now. This business model has pushed out many friends and neighbors I grew up with. As they've sought a variance to build two new towers next to that building, Stellar created a website, 34110th.com, that purports to dispel, quote-unquote, myths about this project. In reality, the site is filled with the kind of false claims that Stellar is known for. I was gratified Councilwoman Aviles raised questions about the levels of affordability, but I have questions about the more basic math here. Stellar's site claims, quote, "60% of all units on the property will be affordable." It variously promises both 162 and 277 affordable apartments, of which, quote-unquote, 64 to 90, oh, the, the assessment they actually filed says it's just 64 to 96. The math is simple. 64 to 96 out of 319 is about 20 to 30%. Part of the reason that we don't know how affordable this will actually be is that Stellar admits in their own writing that they have not submitted a final plan here. We need a final plan with guaranteed affordability because this company has always done what they can to sneak out of affordable housing requirements. I also just want to point out that, you know, and I'm going to send this in writing.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
You can finish up. Go ahead, Hunter.
Okay, perfect. You know, they've highlighted the poor conditions at the site as a reason for having this new development. They've described, quote-unquote, "uninviting walls" and "underutilized space." I am A, disparaged to, upset to see my block disparaged like that, but B, I'm upset that, you know, Stellar is, is claiming that their own mismanagement is what needs improvement. As some folks have pointed out, this, quote-unquote, "new park" that they're going to build
You can start wrapping up, Hunter.
That they actually locked away from the residents. And as the councilwoman said, you know, Stellar should have been treating their tenants well from the beginning. And on that note, I just want to say it's clear that Fifth Avenue Committee is their preferred partner for a, a community benefits agreement. The leadership of Fifth Avenue Committee was here today with Stellar. They've backed this proposal from day one. This is an organization with millions in corporate contributions.
Thank you, Hunter. Thank you.
Okay, because I have texts from an email showing Fifth Avenue Committee threatening the 341 residents.
Thank you, Hunter. You could always submit your written testimony. Okay? Thank you. We're going to move to Carrie Bloss. Carrie, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Starting time.
Starting time. Thank you very much. I'm Carrie Bloss. I'm the executive director of Heights and Hills. Our mission is to support older adults in the Brooklyn community, to help them maintain their housing and independence through supports to homebound older adults and supports to family caregivers. We also operate, excuse me, an older adult center in Park Slope. I'm also a resident of Park Slope. There is a... As many people have said, there is a deep lack of affordable housing in New York City. This particularly affects older adults, who met most of whom are on a fixed income. This project will provide approximately 70 new homes dedicated to older adults, which is very important to Heights and Hills and the community as a whole. We're also very excited, as Heights and Hills, about the potential for using the new publicly-accessible park for outdoor programming. We... Our older adult center is located on Seventh Street, just off of Seventh Avenue. We do some programming in Prospect Park, but we would love to be able to do programming closer to Fifth Avenue, where many of our resident... many of our members reside. So we're very excited about the potential for that for residents of the new buildings, of the existing buildings, and of older adults from the larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hahn, you're next. If you can hear me, you may begin.
I can hear you. Thank you very much. My name's Robert Hahn. I'm a resident of Gowanus, just across Fourth Avenue from where the site's being developed. So I'm very aware of all of the changes happening in the neighborhood, at least in my neighborhood right now. And that change is really trying to change industrial sites into livable buildings, where there can be an increase in density in the neighborhood, as well as affordable housing in Gowanus specifically. I see the site very similar to some of the things that's happening in my neighborhood. It's a site with very complex building limitations on the site. And from what I see, the proposal is really trying to work around these limitations and propose something that allows for affordable housing on the site, but also updates, modernizes, and improves the street landscape on that street with where the bulkhead of the MTA comes down into the ground. I would just add to, you know, Park Slope, Gowanus are very expensive neighborhoods. Having a site that allows for affordable housing, not just in the neighborhood in general, but in a location that allows for a lot of access to transportation is very important. In Gowanus, much of the affordable housing in the neighborhood that existed prior to the rezoning is far from transportation and is a bit of a transportation desert. This allows those people that are using that affordable housing much more opportunity down the line, jobs otherwise, just getting around and seeing friends, getting to food, all that sort of stuff. So that's it for my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There being no questions, this applicant panel is now excused. I'm going to call the next panel up. That is Yook Ying Chin, Rhonda Beatty, Vielka Bonilla, and Edith King.
And I will just clarify that we have an additional two sets of in-person panels, but no further online panels. If you are in the room and you have not submitted a speaker card for this project, please do so now.
Ms. Chin, you may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Yook Ying Chin. I'm a longtime resident of Prospect Towers, 34110th Street. I acknowledge the new housing construction on premise would be beneficial to the community and to the tenants of 34110th Street, based on the documents presented and the conversation with Stellar Management. The project would ensure repairs and benefits for the current residents of Prospect Towers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will hear from Ms. Bonilla.
Hi. I will speak Spanish, okay?
Yes, that's fine. Just need you to speak into the mic.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Vielka Bonilla. Vivo en el 341 de la 10th Street por 22 años. He criado ahí a mis cuatro nietos. Dos viven conmigo todavía ahí. Pienso que el building es una... un buen building para la comunidad. Las otras cosas que vayan a ser, verdad, lo que vayan a añadir, espero que sea también de beneficio para toda la comunidad como ha sido el building en el que nosotros... O yo he vivido por 22 años y he podido criar a mis nietos en ese edificio. Cada persona que yo le escucho, verdad, mi inglés es limitado, pero todo lo que escucho, cada cual tiene su razón, verdad? Pero creo que para la comunidad es un buen beneficio, verdad? Que por lo menos pues tengan unos apartamentos, unos buildings, que sean buenos para nosotros, verdad? Yo ya yo tengo 70 años, no sé qué tiempo voy a vivir más, pero espero pues que me toque ver todo ese crecimiento que hay en el área. Y también ese building antes yo escuchaba mucho que no era muy bueno. Ahora, desde que... No digo que desde que Stellar lo cogió, ha progresado. Es lo que yo he visto. He visto que ha sido, usted sabe, mucho mejor de los que antes de que yo vivía en el edificio, verdad? Pienso que para mí han hecho un buen trabajo. No sé, ¿entiende? Para mí. Porque no soy una persona que tengo una casa. Los que son owners, los que tienen una renta, son propietarios, piensan de otra manera cuando yo ven que está entrando demasiada gente a su alrededor. Eso también digo yo, no sé. Gracias.
Next, we'll have Rhonda Beatty.
It's Rhonda.
Rhonda, sorry.
My name is Rhonda Beatty. Yes, I'm a longtime resident of 34110th Street as well. And as far as Stellar Management is concerned, I'm talking on a personal level. I've never had any problems with them, any concerns that I had as far as my apartment is concerned, like repairs or whatever. They always fix it, so I really don't have any problems with them, and that's about it.
Thank you so much. We have no questions for the applicant panel. You are now excused. Thank you so much for testifying, ladies. Next, I'm going to call up Hector Vale, Carmen Lopez, and Aaron Crawford. And I just want to remind everyone, if you could speak into the mic, we do have people that are listening online, so if you could just speak into the mic. Thank you. And we will begin with Hector Vale.
Yeah, my name is Hector Vale. I've been there living for 23 years, and I'm happy they do affordable housing there, because the neighbor needs to change, and we don't expect to have just an empty lot like this. People could come and bring garbage, no way. There should be a building there, and we all need to live in a nice neighborhood where we could grow our children and our grandchildren. And Stand Management, I never had no problem. When I have a problem with anything, they come and fix it. They have done a lot of fixing for me and my house, and they do good work. And I believe that they need to do those housing for people that don't have places to live, you know? That'd be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Carmen Lopez.
I'm going to speak Spanish. I'm fluent in Spanish.
Yeah, that's fine. Is the mic on?
Yes, so.
Okay, just need you to speak into the mic.
Mi nombre es Carmen Lopez. Mi nombre es Carmen Lopez. Estoy viviendo allí por 34 años. Crié mi último hijo. Todos mis nietos han estado allí. Yo creo que se necesita, se necesita más vivienda para la gente y que sean afortunados, porque si son caras no vale la pena. Pero se necesita vivienda porque hay mucha gente sin casa. Que se esté la management que han sido otros que han construido a través de la cuarta, la quinta, la sexta, por todo eso han construido, se necesita en casa, y yo no estoy en contra. Otra cosa que voy a decir, la basura, la basura tiene que salir, y sale mucha porque hay muchos habitantes. Y solamente la sacan los días que están supuesta a salir la basura. Vamos a tener más basura, vamos a tener más tráfico, pero vamos a tener más viviendas. Vamos a tener más vivienda, y espero que sí, sean afortunados y que no nos engañen.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Gracias. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, my name is Aaron Crawford. I've been in 34110th Street for 25 years. I have no complaints about Stellar. When it comes to repairs, they take care of the repairs. We come to the elevators, they took care of the elevators, and I really appreciate the work that they do around there. And if facility grow like this, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. We have no questions for the applicant panel. Thank you for testifying here today. The final panel on this project will be Roman Reyes, Mary Salas, and Carlos Torres. We can begin with Raymond Reyes. Is Raymond Reyes here still?
Yes, that's me. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Chairman Riley and members of the subcommittee...
Mr. Reyes, can I just have you just talk into the mic?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is on?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Riley, members of the subcommittees zoning and franchises. My name is Roman Reyes. I have been a member of 32 BJ's. For the last five years, I've been with Riseboro Community Partnership, and I'm part of the residential division. S.I.E.N. 32 BJ is dedicated to representing the interests of 175,000 members across 11 states, Washington D.C. Our union members are the pillars of the property services sectors here in New York City, performing crucial roles in the commercial and residential buildings, stadiums, airports, and multitudes of other locations. Our diverse membership shares our common goals to elevate employment standards throughout our industry. 32 BJ's has secured a credible commitment from Stellar for the creation of good and permanent jobs within the residential housing aspect of the project. We estimated that there would be a total of five residential project jobs on this site. The current Stellar Management building is a work site for 32 BJ's members. When completed, the project will provide quality jobs that uphold and prevent prevailing labor standards in the industry. There will be also a quick and peaceful pathway to our unionizing of the employees to desire. 32 BJ is proud to support the development project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mary Salas. Mary?
Marquilon Salas.
I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Mary Marquilon Salas. I speak in English, eh, Spanish. Yo vivo en 341 Tenth Street for 22 años. Allí nació mi hija. Para mí es excelente edificio. No tengo ninguna queja de eso allí. Cualquier cosa que se daña, todo eso, he seguido hasta el súper allí. También es excelente barrio, y también estoy de acuerdo con lo que van a dar, van a hacer estos nuevos proyectos, porque hay tanta gente que necesita una vivienda. Entonces, este, estoy muy de acuerdo con eso allí. Y como dijo una compañera, espero que todo se cumpla las cosas que están en proyecto, y estoy de acuerdo. Gracias. Muy amada.
Thank you so much. And is Carlos Torres here? Going once, going twice? Is... Okay, all right. There being no questions for this applicant panel, you are now excused. Counsel, are there any more members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
No, there are no people who have signed up online, additional people who have signed up online or in person to testify as to this project.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on this pre-considered LUs relating to 341 Tenth Street proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. So I'm going to ask all of those to clear the room, so we can invite the will it's point people back in the room. So we're just going to take a quick break. Hello, is 396 here?
Yes.
You are? I will now open up the fourth public hearing on pre-considered LUs relating to the 396-400 Avenue X rezoning proposal in Councilmember Brandon's district in... in Gravesend, Brooklyn. The proposal seeks a rezoning that will involve the mapping of a mandatory inclusionary housing to develop a mixed-use residential development. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, with anyone here in person, you could please see one of the sergeants to submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Counsel, can we please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, Chair. The first panel consists of Neil Weisberg and Robert Pelano.
Hold on. Pelano.
Counsel, can we please administer the affirmation?
Can you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Neil Weisberg. Robert Pelano.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in response to... in your testimony and in response to member questions?
I do. I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Please reinstate your name or organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Neil Weisberg from Seifar Shaw on behalf of the owners of 396-400 Avenue X. This is a proposal to rezone... Next slide, please. This is an amendment to zoning map 28C, changing an existing R4 residence district, underlying lots 1, 4, and 6 on block 7198 to an R7A residence district within a C2-4 commercial overlay. This will also include mapping the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Next slide, please. The three... The project areas consist of three tax lots on the south side of Avenue X between East Second and East Third Street. The development site, however, is just lots 1 and 4 on the southeast corner of East Second and Avenue X. Next slide, please. The existing development site is improved with a one-story medical office building and a two-story mixed-use building with a medical office on the ground floor and a residence on the second floor. It's a 10,000-square-foot lot. Next site, next slide, please. This is a picture of the zoning map change. As I mentioned, it's an existing R4 within the Special Ocean Parkway District. The rezoning will rezone the project area to an R7A with a C2-4 commercial overlay. Next slide.
And some reserved for formerly homeless people. This project stands as the most significant fully affordable housing initiative in four decades, and it's only the beginning. My dedication during Phase One paved the way for what we have before us. A chance to complete what we started, a transformative movement in our shared journey, Phase Two of Willets Point. This plan brings fourteen hundred units of affordable housing, bringing the entire Willets Point neighborhood to two thousand five hundred units of one hundred percent of which are affordable. It also enhances open and retail space, a two hundred and fifty-room hotel, and the city's first fully electric privately funded soccer stadium that will be built a hundred percent union labor, serving as the economic engine that's driving this entire vision. Beyond homes, this project will put money in the pockets of thousands of New Yorkers with over fifteen hundred permanent jobs and fourteen, over fourteen thousand construction jobs. Willets, the Willets Point revitalization plan is not only initiating the construction of a historical project, is creating stability and security for a working-class community that is struggling to make it, struggling to put a roof over their head and put food on the table. The swath of land once known as the Valley of Ashes is projected to generate one point six billion in the economic impact over the next thirty years. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Adams for his partnership and support in this vision, as well as the New York City Football Club, who like me never stopped believing that Queens would be their home. And of course, to my brothers and sisters in labor for all that you have done to help this project come through. The partners at EDC, the Queens Development Group, and the dedicated community leaders in the Willets Point Task Force, whose support is essential for the project that has it all. So, thank you again Chair Riley for giving me the opportunity to present what I believe is a game changer, not just for Queens, but for New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moya. Thank you for your leadership. This is an amazing project, so I'm looking forward to hearing about it. Counselor, can you please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, Chair. So, I have four of the five panelists. So, I'm going to start with somebody I know, Ethan Goodman. We then have Jennifer O'Sullivan, Brad Simms. Oh, so Brad Simms, you're not on the panel, so I'll take that back. Danielle White. And so, I'm missing the two of you.
Yes. Melissa Roman-Birch with the New York City Economic Development Corporation.
And Frank Montarisi from Related.
Okay. And you've submitted, I just want to make sure you submitted speaker cards. Okay. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth in response to member, to councilmember questions and in your statements?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And for the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, please just reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you to Councilmember Moya for your incredible vision and partnership in the transformation of Willets Point. My name is Melissa Roman-Birch, and as the Chief Operating Officer for the New York City Economic Development Corporation, I am extremely proud of this generational project, which will bring economic opportunity to a community that has been long underserved. As you know, Willets Point has suffered for decades from environmental pollution and a lack of critical infrastructure. Will no more. The city has now committed millions in needed infrastructure that will remediate the site, deliver new streets, sidewalks, sewers, and a brand-new water main that will serve all of Queens. The Adams Administration is writing a new chapter, and we're thankful for the city council's partnership in this effort. As you'll see from the presentation today, the zoning actions before you will support thousands of new affordable homes, a six hundred and fifty-seat school, neighborhood-serving retail, new public space, and New York's first-ever soccer stadium, which will be a hundred percent privately financed and union-built. This once-in-a-generation plan responds to the city's housing crisis, will create thousands of jobs, and generates six point one billion in economic impact over the next thirty years. Thank you again to the committee, and I look forward to taking your questions.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Chair Riley, I'm Ethan Goodman with the firm of Fox Rothschild. We represent the joint venture development team at Willets Point comprised of the Queens Development Group and the New York City Football Club. Next slide, please. We are tremendously excited to present to you a project that represents the culmination of over fifty years of efforts to redevelop the Willets Point Peninsula. What was once a dumping ground for the city's ash waste has been cleaned up and is ready to accommodate the city's largest new one hundred percent affordable housing development in over forty years. In addition to the over six billion in economic impact of this project, it'll bring more than sixteen thousand permanent and construction jobs, and will build new streets and infrastructure to serve both Willets Point and all of Queens. Next slide, please. Phase One of the redevelopment is already underway, as Queens Development Group broke ground in January on the first eight hundred and eighty affordable housing units. On the next slide, I believe that that'll go, that'll take you through this. This first phase will culminate, culminate in the development of eleven hundred affordable units, a six hundred and fifty-seat public school, and an acre of open space, all built atop six acres of environmentally remediated land. And now, we're proud to be before you seeking approvals to develop an additional seventeen acres of Willets Point on land whose environmental remediation is nearing completion. This Phase Two project would build an additional fourteen hundred affordable homes, two hundred and fifty-room hotel, a hundred and fifteen thousand more square feet of open space, and finally, a twenty-five-thousand-seat soccer-specific stadium to serve as the permanent home of the New York City Football Club. I believe our slides are not advancing, but if we want, there we go. Okay. If we can go to one more slide? And you can see an image on the screen right here. So, this image shows the location of the Phase One development currently under construction, which will establish a gateway entrance into the new Willets Point community at the southwest corner. And in the next slide, you will see the four development blocks that comprise the Phase Two application currently before you. We've termed these from south to north, the Triangle Parcel, the Stadium Parcel, the T Parcel, and the Northern Parcel. Next slide will show that the Triangle Parcel contains the hotel and a three hundred and fifty-unit affordable residential building. The Stadium Parcel is just to the north, centrally located in the district. The T Parcel will contain another three hundred and forty-unit one hundred percent affordable housing building. And the Northern Parcel is the largest seven hundred and ten-unit one hundred percent affordable residential building. So, the next few images will show you two important elements of the project. On the next slide, you'll notice in the northeast-facing image that you see here, these two first phases of development will establish a consistent building frontage along the east side of Seaver Way across from City Field. Seaver Way used to be known as the back street of City Field. It will now be known as the front entryway to the new Willets Point community. Now, while there still will be almost thirty-five acres of Willets Point to be developed in future phases, these initial phases will strongly establish a new community fronting on Seaver Way. This will be a community of two thousand five hundred families and individuals, which the Queens Development Group will speak more about in a minute, in a moment. The next slide, you'll see a west-facing image, and you'll see in this image that the stadium has been designed by our architects, HOK Architecture, to integrate into the existing block form at Willets Point and rise to a height concurrent with the adjacent residences. As such, the stadium will not be some object placed on the community, but rather become an integral part of the new community. In addition to the physical form of the stadium, the Football Club will soon speak about how programming and operations will further integrate the stadium with the community. So, on the next slide, you'll see we're, we're before the council with five actions to facilitate the project. We are seeking zoning text amendments to the Special Willets Point District, which itself was passed by the council in two thousand and eight, to establish the framework under which we will be able to apply for special permit relief. And then, we are seeking three special permits, one for the twenty-five-thousand-seat stadium, one for the two hundred and fifty-room hotel, and the third for modifications to use bulking and parking regulations to facilitate the proposed buildings and design. Finally, we are seeking changes to the city map to formally map the streets around Phase One and to allow for a future increase in the grades of streets around Phase Two at such future time as the rest of the district is acquired and redeveloped. We've been working with the local community board on this project for over ten years. We have met with them dozens upon dozens of times. And I think largely for this reason and this established relationship, this culminated in their recommendation in December by a vote of thirty-seven to two to approve these actions. In January, the borough president added his support recommending approval of the actions. And just last week, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the actions. With that, I'd like to introduce the first of two members of the, of the development team, Frank Montarisi with the Queens Development Group, and he'll speak a little bit more about the team developing the affordable housing and hotel portions of the project.
Thank you, Ethan. Good afternoon, councilmembers and Chair Riley. My name is Frank Montarisi. I'm an Executive Vice President from Related. I've been working on our Willets Point project for a very long time, over a decade. I grew up five minutes from this site in Whitestone. This, this site, this project is very close to home for me. The Queens Development Group is a fifty-fifty joint venture between Related and Sterling Equities. Both of our companies have been the developers of large mixed-use projects here in New York City. We at Related, our company was started in affordable housing more than fifty years ago, and affordable housing is very much a part of our DNA. Next slide. If we move one slide, thank you. So, as you see the, the pictures of the projects on the, on the screen here, these are projects that I have led here in New York City. Hunter's Point South, nine hundred and twenty-five units, all affordable on the Long Island City waterfront. Riverwalk Park, three hundred and forty units on Roosevelt Island. The Harriet Tubman Houses, sixty-three units in, in Far Rockaway. Many of these projects in Queens, all of them, all affordable projects. And again, affordable housing is something at Related that we are proud to do, not something that we are forced to do. Next slide. To show that, we've just started on vertical development at the first phase of Willets Point that Councilman, Councilman Moya talked about previously. This is a, what you see on the screen here is a hundred percent affordable project. We are, we closed our construction financing and ground lease with HPD, HDC, and EDC in November. This is an eight hundred and eighty-unit project, the, the first part of the, of Phase One. What you see on the screen here is eleven hundred units. The first eight hundred and eighty units is what we started on. As the, as the, as the, as the council, as, as Councilman Moya referred to before, very, very deep affordability in this project. The affordability levels that we came up with are a result of longstanding conversations that we've had with the councilmen, the, the borough president, all the city agencies involved, HPD, HDC, EDC, and, and, and the mayor's office. Our deal for Phase Two, for the next fourteen hundred units that are, that is, that is of the, the subject of our conversation today, is that all, the additional fourteen hundred units in Phase Two will, will be developed in accordance with, with the standards with HPD and HDC through their affordable housing programs. All of the units, all fourteen hundred units, will be developed in those programs. And the affordability levels for the next fourteen hundred units will be similar to the affordability that we've just finalized on the eight hundred and eighty units that we just, that we just started on. And to just throw some of those stats out there, that, of, of, of those affordability levels, over fifty percent, it's fifty-two percent of the eight hundred and eighty units are reserved for low-income households. Fifteen percent of the units are reserved for formerly homeless residents, and, and the affordability levels range from less than thirty percent of AMI to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, all of which are below market in this area. Next slide. We are committed to the redevelopment of Willets Point. As I said before, we were the designated developer of this district in two thousand and twelve. We have been working on this plan for over ten years. This is a project that will transform an area that was underutilized and contaminated and turn this into New York, it will turn it into Queens' next great neighborhood. This is an all-affordable project that will be anchored by a soccer stadium from New York City Football Club. I'm happy to turn the microphone over to Jennifer Sullivan from NYCFC.
Thank you, Frank. Good afternoon, Chair Riley and councilpersons. I'm Jennifer O'Sullivan, Chief Operating Officer for New York City Football Club. On behalf of New York City Football Club, I want to begin by saying how grateful I am to be here sharing our vision with you today. This approval process is so crucial to the club's future and to our fans, many of whom live in this community and the borough of Queens. For those who don't know us, we are New York City's only major-league soccer team. Oh, sorry. Next slide, please. Thank you. We are eighty percent owned by City Football Group, parent company to Manchester City, and twenty men's and women's clubs worldwide, and twenty percent owned by the New York Yankees. Announced as the twentieth franchise of MLS in two thousand and thirteen, we played our inaugural season in two thousand and fifteen, and we have been playing for and investing in the city of New York for the past ten years. Our season consists of a thirty-four-game season, seventeen home games, seventeen away, runs from late February to mid-October, culminating in the playoffs in November and December. We were incredibly proud to represent New York City as the two thousand and twenty-one MLS Cup champions and two thousand and twenty-two Campeonus Cup champions. Our academy program, consisting of elite players ages U-12 to U-17, is one of the best in MLS and is the first in the country to win back-to-back titles at the U-19 level. We have produced twelve homegrown players. Those are players in our academy who come up through the ranks, who sign professional team, professional team contracts with us, and many of those players have come from right here in New York City, Bronx, Brooklyn, and other areas in the New York City metro area. We are incredibly lucky and proud to have such a rich pool of talent here in the New York area. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of what a match day would look like, and you can see the, the passion that we know that our fans will bring on game days as they do now. Next slide. Beyond enhancing our community work in the city, which I will talk about in a moment, this private investment will bring immense economic benefits to the families and businesses of New York City and those that call Willets Point home. As you heard earlier, the larger Willets Point project is projected to generate more than six billion dollars in economic impact over the next thirty years. And the eight hundred million-dollar privately-financed stadium will be entirely union-built, creating thousands of new jobs, including four thousand construction jobs alone for the stadium build, resulting in over three hundred million in construction wages, salaries, and benefits that will be invested directly back into this community. Local procurement is absolutely critical and essential for us to this proposed project, and we would make it our priority to partner with local businesses in Queens and across the city, not only during the construction process, but also once the stadium is up and running. We are also thrilled to be able to relocate our front office staff of over a hundred people to Willets Point where they will be headquartered in the stadium. Next slide. I do want to be clear, however, that the stadium, if approved, will not simply serve as a place to play soccer games. It offers a community hub, a home not just for our club and for our fans, but for the local community while bringing significant economic benefits into the region. If this project is approved, New York City Football Club will provide free space for community groups to hold meetings and run events on non-event days that will further enrich this vibrant community. In addition, a community activation fund will be created by us to help offset any event-related costs incurred by community event sponsors, providing a free and accessible space for all. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we are incredibly excited to have the opportunity to move our staff of over a hundred people to Willets Point, and that includes the staff of our award-winning nonprofit arm, City in the Community. Earlier in the U-LAR process, community members in Queens had the chance to hear from some of those unique New York City Football Club employees who lead that nonprofit work, which positively impacts thousands of historically underserved youth across the five boroughs. Those employees, many of whom were born and raised in New York City, and all who lives throughout the city and benefited themselves from soccer programming, genuinely are the club's heartbeat. For them, having a permanent home in Willets Point will help them to expand that programming and reach even more children and families across the five boroughs. That includes our Saturday Night Lights Initiative, which provides free youth development and violence prevention programs in the neighborhoods with historically higher crime rates. To date, CITC has provided over thirty thousand young New Yorkers with free soccer programming across all five boroughs. We've constructed over fifty mini-soccer pitches for youth and family-playing communities across New York City with a goal to build an additional twenty-six more before the World Cup comes here in two thousand and twenty-six. We currently have a presence in over seventy-eight percent of neighborhoods in the city, and we plan to continue to grow and expand our free school-based community programs in Queens along with the rest of the other four boroughs. Next slide, please. We are also vividly aware that Willets Point has a challenging history of environmental degradation, and if this project is approved, New York City Football Club will do its part in protecting vulnerable communities from the effects of climate change. That is why we are building the first-ever all-electric stadium in New York City and the first in Major League Soccer's history, working towards a zero-waste stadium with a goal of credible net-zero emissions. Next slide. I want to thank you again for allowing me to speak today, represent our organization, which includes thousands of fans and local community members who participate in our community programming. We look forward to answering any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Can you provide me with a more specific breakdown of the proposed affordability levels for the residential buildings?
So, for the, for, we have the, the breakdown on the eight hundred and eighty units that we've, we've just started on. That's the financing we closed in November. For the future buildings, the, we haven't yet set the affordability levels exact, but what we've basically said in our, in our, our deal with EDC is that we will, the affordability levels of the fourteen hundred units will be similar to the eight hundred and eighty. But we want to be responsive to, you know, concerns that come in the future and, you know, and sitting down with the councilmember and, and, and other stakeholders, you know, in, in when we go into figuring out exactly what the AMI levels are in each building. Because there's, there's basically three, in the Phase Two, there's basically three housing sites. There's the Triangle Site, the T Site, and the Northern Site. And so, when we go to develop those, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll, and we'll, you know, like drill down into the exact affordability levels, just like, just like we did last year when we, when we closed on the financing for Phase One.
Okay. Do you have the actual AMIs?
Sure. I have, I, yeah, there you go. So, and, and we're happy to, to send these, send a chart to you, but it's, the, the formerly homeless band was fifteen percent, seven percent at thirty percent of AMI, eleven percent at forty percent of AMI, seven percent at sixty percent of AMI, twelve percent at eighty percent of AMI, thirty-eight percent at a hundred percent of AMI, and nine percent at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI.
Okay. Thank you. The plan includes a school site, which phase, which phase is the school site part of, and what grade level, how many seats, and what's the estimated timeline for that school?
So, the school site is in, is in Phase One. So, our responsibility in Phase One, there's, the Phase One is comprised of the eight hundred and eighty units. I'm happy to point at the screen if it makes sense.
No.
It might be better to do this than, like this, but it's the eight hundred and eighty units. Then, there's two hundred and twenty units of senior housing. We're hoping to, it's actually the, we're gonna, we're gonna pull the, the image up on the screen here. The two hundred and twenty units of senior housing, we're hoping to, that that'll close later this year. We're, we're, we're in the, you know, middle of design for that, and we really want to get going on that later this year. And then, the, the pad after the, the, the senior housing is the school site, and it's a six hundred and fifty-seat school that we're basically delivering the pad to the SCA, and the SCA is going to build the six hundred and fifty-seat school on that, on that site.
Are they going to have it built by the time the building's built?
It's.
That was the SCA joke.
It's really, it's really up to, it's really up to the SCA, but.
That was the SCA joke, if you didn't get it.
It's being turned over to the SCA as a clean, fully remediated pad in two thousand and twenty-five, and it'll serve six hundred and fifty seats, K through A.
Thank you. What is the size of the community activation fund, which I, I really like that idea? And how would community members use and access it?
So, it is a total of five hundred thousand dollars. It'll be a thou, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the first five years. And there will be an online reservation booking system that we'll, we'll have. We will ensure that we publish, publicize the available dates, and they can, they can, through our community liaison, who'll be working with that calendar and that, that booking system, they'll be able to, to, to book the site for whatever events they'd like to have. There's no, there's no rent that will be charged, that, those types of costs would be, you know, for cleaning, for, you know, the operation of the space that they'd want to use. So, it's really trying to keep the cost to a, to a minimum, especially the smaller, you know, organizations that you don't have the means to, to be able to go out and, and rent spaces.
And why just five years? Is there any talks about continuing this after five years?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't discussed that yet, but the, the initial conversations were around, the commitment was around the first five years, for sure.
Okay. Lastly, this is a beautiful residential building, but it's adjacent to a stadium, two stadiums. I'm thinking about noise cancellations and affecting anyone's sleep patterns. So, can you just go into that a little bit more into that for me?
Sure. You, you are correct. It's not just the stadium, but anybody who's been a Met fan for any number of years knows there's other stuff going on in the area, too. So, as, as part of our extensive environmental impact statement here, we did noise monitoring throughout to determine existing levels where new residences would be built. And I believe that, what emerged from that is certain environmental regulations, E-designation regulations, that require a certain minimum amount of window-wall attenuation in the residential windows. So, depending if you, you know, if you're facing the subway facing south, there's a little bit of a higher level than if you're facing something that's not, not necessarily as close to one of those high-noise generators. With respect to the stadium proper, the goal, and Jennifer can speak more about it, the goal of the stadium is largely to keep a lot of that noise inside and internal to the stadium. So, we actually don't anticipate there's much in the way of leakage of noise from there. It's really more about the train, the planes, other things that are going on through the neighborhood. But rest assured that all of these units will be designed so that they maintain acceptable interior noise levels.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Moya?
Thank you, Chair Riley. I just have a couple of questions. Can the football club just discuss a little bit about the community programs that you've already implemented in New York City, but especially in the borough of Queens? You know, for, a, a lot of people here in New York know that when sports franchises come in, it's very minimal that gets done with the community. You had a couple of tickets to a couple of schools and, you know, throughout the year. But you guys have been doing some things, and I think it's important that you share that publicly. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss our, our community programming, and I think it's the one thing that we're probably the proudest of. You know, it's not so much what we do on the pitch, but, but, but off the pitch as well. And our community team, I always say I would put them up against anyone else. They are a, a force to be reckoned with, and their passion and dedication is unmatched. Thirty thousand kids across the five boroughs in New York over the last ten years have received free soccer programming as a direct result of the work that our city and the community team does. The Saturday Night Lights Initiative, which I, as I mentioned, opens up safe and accessible places for kids to play on Friday and Saturday nights in conjunction with the DA's office and the NYPD. And in Queens specifically, we have a number of programs, including a couple in your district that are Healthy Hat Trick, which is healthy eating for kids. We've constructed over fifty mini-pitches, as I said, across the communities in the last ten years with another goal to provide twenty-six more before the twenty-six World Cup comes. So, you know, I, I think when you look at the, the reach that City in the Community has, there is not another professional football club that does what our, what our team does on the ground, ensuring that kids have safe, accessible places to play, that they have access to a sport that inner-city children are oftenly, often excluded from and, and not part of. And so, for us, it is all about ensuring that, that this game is accessible to all. You never know where the next Messi or Ronaldo is going to come from until you put a ball at their feet.
Let's omit the second name that you mentioned from the record, please, if we could, Mr. Chair. How many, how many Saturday Night Light programs do you have right now? You just currently?
Eight.
Eight. And I think two more are coming down.
Two more are coming.
Two more are coming down the line. And I want to commend the, the, the City Football Group for doing work in, in schools like mine that have one of the highest number of migrant children and providing free clinics for them. And really, you know, it is a universal language for a lot of these children that are newly arrived here. The one thing that they do know and love is football. And you all have been very, very good in making sure that we made those young kids feel very, very comfortable in the new community and in the new setting that they're, they're at. So, I, I really want to applaud you for, for the great work and partnership there. What are the existing partnerships, what existing partnerships do you have already in place that facilitate internships and employment opportunities, especially for the people of Queens?
We have actually a number of, of relationships with local Queens universities, including St. John's, LaGuardia, Queens College, York College. including St. John's, LaGuardia, Queens College, York College. And our, our Human Resources Department works very closely with them in terms of ensuring that we are getting qualified, diverse candidates throughout the pipeline into the, into the, the football club. We have a number of graduates of those schools and programs that are currently employees of ours. We do a lot of career workshops, we do a lot of mentorship programs. We have a lot of our staff from the organization who go and speak to students, letting them know just about what the different types of, of jobs are in sports. It's not always just about being a, a coach, an agent, or a player. But if you're into graphics design, if you're into journalism, if you're into all of these other different areas of the business that sports provide. And so a lot of it is ensuring that, that these local students understand and know that there's a pathway for them if they are interested. And so it's a priority for us to ensure that we are bringing in kids from, from the Five Boroughs, and specifically now Queens, to let them know that there are opportunities within the club.
And I, and I believe we are still in talks with CUNY to develop that connection with CUNY students, to be working with the New York City Football Club in the areas of hospitality, that would create a program for them to be part of that when the stadium is built?
That is correct. You know, we've been limited sort of in the, those types of opportunities because we don't have our own stadium to play in. But once we do, that opens up an entirely new, you know, area of the business for us to be able to bring students into. The one other thing I'd like to mention, too, is our City and the Community program. We do have our Young Leaders Program, and through that is a lot of those kids, are kids who come up through our programs, who then become coaches, part-time coaches and leaders in their own communities and neighborhoods. And we have a lot of them that come through the club as, as interns as well, and have become full-time employees with us.
That's great. So, look, I just want to say thank you again for being here today. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions on, on housing, which is just really quick because I just want to get back to some of the things that Chairman Riley had brought up. In my community, you know, it has a much lower AMI than the multi-county regions used as a baseline to determine the city's affordable housing. But can you explain the income levels associated with the deeply affordable units in this project that actually align with areas like Corona?
Well, I mean, Councilmember, you remember, you remember about six months ago, maybe it was eight months ago, when we were trying to put the Phase One deal together and, and finalizing the AMIs, and you came to me and you said, you said, "We need to lower, we need to lower some of the affordability levels here." And, 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 you know, it was that conversation. It was that, you know, it was, it was, it was you as the, as the, as the, as the, as the council member for the district, right, that, that communicated to us that, you know, we needed to rethink the levels and come up with what we closed on in November. The fact of the matter is that in affordable housing, sometimes it can get a little wonky. You can get a lot of spreadsheets. But it comes down to what we're doing is providing housing for New Yorkers. And, and it really needs to be, when you, when you look at one of these projects, you need to, you need to match, you know, you need to match the spreadsheet with, you know, with the reality on the ground. And for that to happen, there needs to be good, consistent communication between the development team, all the local stakeholders, you know, yourself being, you know, first among those, and then, but, but everybody. And I can, I can think back to in my time working on this project over, you know, over, over 10 years. And again, you know, having grown up in the, having grown up in the area, you know, those, those conversations are important so that, so that we can, so we can create an affordable housing project that, that meets the needs of the local community and then the areas around it. And so really, like, that, that's what it's all about, is, is figuring out the affordability levels for the HPD and matching them to the affordability levels in the district. And I think what we've come up with for Phase One, which we're going to take forward into Phase Two, is, is, takes all that into account.
Great, thank you. And last question is, look, other sports arena projects in the city, like Atlantic Yards famously promised affordable housing, but has yet to deliver on many of those promises. Can you explain a little bit of how this project is, is, is different?
I mean, I, I think for, you know, for why this project is different from my perspective, I mean, first, I think, you know, I, I give, I think, I give a lot of credit to the team that's working on this. And that's not just, you know, the private development team, that's the public development team. You know, we've been working, you know, we were designated the developer of this site in 2012. We've been working with our city partners at EDC for a long time. We've been working with our local stakeholders, yourself and, and others, for, for a long time. I think, I think at the end of the day, what makes this project, you know, different, look, there's a lot of tough sites in New York City, this is, this is a tough site. We had, we, in the last two years, we removed 200,000 tons of contaminated soil from the site. You know, you had to remove contamination that has been there for decades. We have, we are right now, if you come out to the site, as I know, you know, as I know you have been, but for anybody else that comes out to the site, you'll see infrastructure going in. We had to, we had to rebuild, we had to build new roads, we had to put new utilities. We had to plan all of that with our public partners. This was, this was years and years of, of, of hard work in the making. And so I think what, you know, what it, what it comes down to is, I think that there's, there's a, there's really a teamwork around the site, and we all have to, we all have to listen to each other and, and figure out the obstacles as we go along. I think, honestly, I think that's, that's, that's the, that's the difference. And I, I want to add one other thing, because Frank's too modest to add it. The major difference, it's coming out of the ground right now. Like, if you go to Willets, you're gonna see construction cranes and earth moving, and that's for affordable housing, 100% affordable housing. And that's before anything else gets built at Willets. The first structure that's coming out here is gonna house 880 families and individuals in 100% affordable housing. And that proof is in the pudding right there.
Thank you. And lastly, Chair Riley has shared that he would like to do a tryout along with myself for the next season coming up as part of this process. And thank you so much, thank you, Chair Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember Moyer. There being no more questions for this applicant panel, you are not excused. Thank you so much for justifying. Seriously, thank you so much for everyone's patience here today. I'm going to open up the floor for the public testimony. We're gonna give everyone two minutes. If you go over two minutes, I'm just gonna tell you to wrap it up. The first panel that I'm gonna be calling is Nelson Jaren, Bailey Eglon, Brad Sims, and Oscar Garcia. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Once again, that's Oscar Garcia, Brad Sims, Bailey Eglon, and Nelson Jaren. Okay, no. Okay. We have people online, we're gonna do the in-person testimonies first, and then we're gonna go to online testimonies. So we can begin with Mr. Nelson Jaren.
Okay, hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Nelson Jaren.
Nelson, can you just speak into the mic?
Sure. Sorry, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Nelson Jaren, hi, everyone. Thank you, councilmembers, Chair Riley. I'm a Bronx native. 10 years ago, I remember I was in college, and I was just trying to figure out what to do with my life. And I remember hearing that, "Oh, it's gonna be a new club coming up here." And I was thinking, "Oh, wow, this is something that I just want to be a part of, right off," you know. Took all my, whatever, little bit of money that I have, and be like, "Okay, let's become a season ticket holder." So I'm a founding member since then. Then after that, these last eight, nine years of being a, a fan, it's just been such an integral part of my life. I love it, I go to the games every, every week. And, um, being, you know, being part of the Bronx, I was 20 minutes away from Yankee Stadium. But now I know that there's a new stadium coming up, and I'm extremely excited to go to Queens. Because I'm like, "Okay, you know what, this is gonna be my new home, it's my new, new area." And I just wanna, and, and just seeing the increase of people becoming fans, I'm taking friends, and just people wearing shirts and, and colors instead of wearing these other popular brands, other popular clubs like Real Madrid, Barcelona, PSG, like, those, those are foreign, foreign clubs. I just want to be proud of my local team, my local club. And having this stadium, having this community come up here in, in Queens, it's just gonna be something I could be proud of, and be like, "Hey, yeah, that's my, that's my, that's my club." 10 years from now, I don't know where I'll be, I don't know what's gonna happen, but all I know is that I just wish I'll be at a stadium, you know, at the stadium, you know, screaming and shouting, supporting this team and club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Chair Riley, and members of the council, thank you for having me here. My name is Oscar Garcia, I'm from Wyston. So this project is close to my heart, and I'm also a New York City football fan, as well as a season ticket holder since the beginning. And New York City Football Club has shown from the beginning that they're a sporting, a sporting venture, not a business venture, so they care about people more than profits. Because I've seen from the beginning how they treat us, and what they've done to the, to the community, as well as so many kids that have come out of, come out of the academy, which is like the, the farm for the teams, correct? Guys like Justin Hagg from Bushwick, James Anderson Rye, and of course, Tavon Gray from the Boogie Down Bronx, which I'm very proud. And these kids, if New York City wasn't here, I don't think this school would have been found. So, New York City is going, moving forward, creating, and stopping pay-for-play, which is, our parents know how much does it cost to bring a kid in New York City, Queens especially, if they want to play soccer, how expensive it is. New York City is gonna eliminate that, I believe that they will. So this is for our kids, for our grandkids, not just for us now. And I, I see it in the community, how this has all changed. They mentioned Friday night, I mean, Saturday Night Lights. Flushing High School just started in, just recently. We never had that in Queens, where kids don't have to pay to go learn how to play soccer from a professional team. So that's where I support this the most. Never mind that I'm a fan, that soccer is my religion, football is my religion, never mind that. But just that we have a New York City football team riding, a football team riding in our community that's gonna help our kids, our grandkids, great-grandkids, because they're here to stay. And I cannot say it about any other football franchise, any other sports franchise like Dona. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. There being no questions, you're not excused.
Thank you.
The next panel I'm gonna call up is Patrick Shields, Brian Hunt, Jeanette Abbott, and Ray, Raymond Reyes.
Check.
We can begin with Patrick Shields.
Hi, Patrick Shields here. First and foremost, are we on the clock? A New York City resident, American soccer fan, and also a proud member of the Third Rail Supporters Club of the New York City Football Club, friends of Los Temple Ados and all other New York City Football Club supporters. I cannot begin to tell you how pleased and proud I am to be here today after 25 years of hammering away to anyone who will listen about getting MLS and soccer on the ground here. I'm pleased and proud to be here today on the record in this matter. You and your council colleagues have the opportunity to make a far more monumental statement in this process than zoning change alone. In rare instances, it means far more. In this case, imperfect though all projects of this scale are, its reach will be global. You have the opportunity to clear a path for a sport which is challenging the status quo across the board, globally open, gender neutral, racially diverse, ownership diverse, let me repeat, ownership diverse, multiple teams and growing, and also soon to be exponentially expanding on the ancillary new business side. As a veteran small-business owner, I see only opportunity for all. New storefronts, coaches, clinics, academies, agents, PR teams, graphics agencies, business opportunities for and reflecting a truly diverse workforce and ownership stake. Soccer matters, and we all know, sports and heroes matter in ways far beyond the cornerstone laid by my union brothers and sisters. As a veteran now of nine World Cups as a traveler, I tell you this. The world is waiting to purchase its flight to and through New York City. And those that fly into a newly remade LaGuardia over the great borough of Queens will look down and see the final piece of that puzzle. What they will also see is that you will have established a template for cities all over the country, and indeed the world, especially in dense urban areas. You will signal to the world that arena construction will not happen without substantial affordable housing construction attached. Soccer can, will be, and must be, part of that housing solution. This project will be that North Star, it will guide other cities. Do not underestimate the importance of this project and where it will lead. It is the one time you'll be able to look back and be proud of what you will have moved forward. It will reach exponentially, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brian Hunt.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. So we, too, like affordable housing, and just as that provides benefits to the community, and as we heard from New York City Football Club, having a franchise here in Queens, there in Queens, provides benefits to the community, so does union labor. Union labor provides a lot more than the brick and mortar that you see going up around town. There's a lot more to it, as you all know, and that's why we're excited to be a part of it as well. It is a partnership. For the first time, we're gonna have a 100% privately financed and union-built stadium in New York City. It's gonna be built by the safest and most skilled workforce in New York City. Union labor is a function of this economy, it puts dollars back into the community. But these projects, like I said, they're, they're just, they're, they're gonna build more than just the brick and mortar that we walk into every day, and it's gonna provide the benefits that you'll see, and that we have seen for a long time. You know, you build a union, and you're supporting education through our apprenticeship programs. You're supporting healthcare, you're supporting a lot of different programs that are important to the community and important to the members of the local unions, as well as the small businesses that they spend their money in, the delis, the shops, and everything else that comes along with that. New York is a benchmark for many things, and I think it's always been a benchmark for labor, and I think it needs to continue to be a benchmark for labor. That should be at the top of the list, or, you know, one of the things at the top of the list. But it sets an example, not just for the nation, but internationally, because it is soccer, football. It's something that, you know, the whole world can look at, and we could see how it's built, and they could look at this as an example, which I'm very proud to be a part of, I think we all are. And it shows, you know, the values that we share as a city. And I think, again, labor is a major part of that, and I think it's a good example to use as the values that we share as a city, and how we treat our workers with dignity, and we give them a pathway, not only to the middle class, but also an opportunity to retire with dignity and raise a family and continue to live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Next is Jeanette Abbott.
Hello. Hello, okay. Hello and good afternoon. My name is Jeanette Abbott, and I am a member of Local 638. I'm currently in the apprenticeship program as a second-year apprentice, and wow, it has truly changed my life tremendously. I've gone from working dead-end jobs to basically being catapulted into being able to support my entire family. And that is, I mean, speaks leaps and bounds. Union jobs take someone like me, like I said before, and catapult us up to a new level. Union work means safe and reliable construction, being built by skilled and experienced men and women like myself. The Willis Point Project is vital to 638, it means more than jobs. It means building our economy and putting money back into the city, and that is the way things should be done. Being, being, I'm sorry, being from Queens, I am extremely proud to be a part of a project that would be truly committed to providing 100% affordable housing, which is vital to our community, to our community. We are New York City, and now it is time to show the rest of the country how not to just build buildings, but to also build and strengthen our entire community and our economy.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. And last, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, how you doing? Thank you, Chairman Riley, and members of the committee, zoning and franchisees. My name is Ramon Reyes, I've been a member of 32BJ's and for five years worked for Rise Board Community Partnership. I am part of the residential division. The SEIU 32Bender is dedicated to representing the interests of 175 members across 11 states and Washington, DC. Our union members are the pillars of the property services sector here in New York City, performing crucial roles in the commercial, residential, building, stadiums, airports, and multitude of other locations. Our diverse membership shares common goal to elevate employment standards throughout our industries. SEIU 32Benders has secure, credible commitment for related for the creation of good permanent jobs within the residential housing aspect of the project. Additionally, we have credible commitment from the NYCFC for good stadium jobs. Those commitments ensure job standards for the adher-to prevailing wages and benefit standards, which 32BJ's have diligently fought for and active within the industry. The inclusion of the NYCFC stadium in the proposal is a crucial component of the job growth in the area. Our members have track record for working in the stadium across New York City, including account of venues like MSG, City Field, the Football League, Football Club, New Flyship Home, which join the ranks of New York City stadiums that generate quality jobs in the area for union-built to post constructions positions showcasing the positive impact of the well-crafted job that we have on the community. The SEIU 32BJ is proud to support the reimagining of Willis Point Project, and we believe it will catalyze substantial economy growth and investment in the city of New York. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you to the panel, you're not excused. The last panel that are presenting in person will be Mildred Santana, Chris Batris, and Edith King. Is Edith King here? Okay. Ms. Mildred Santana, you may begin.
Good afternoon. Hello, Mr. Chairman Riley and council members. My name is Mildred Santana, and I'm a member from the Hotel Gaming and Traders Council. I am proudly resident from Queens, especially from the area of Corona. I've been living there for over 26 years, since I came from my country. I am here to share my support and support of my union, HTC, for the Willis Point, and also to provide a dozen of good hospitality jobs, and with a new soccer stadium and a thousand of new apartments. This project is going to be a huge for surrounding neighborhood. I urge to come in and the city council to approve this project as a as a member of the union, and also as a person that live in the area. I think that it will be a huge change.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. Last, Mr. Chris Batris.
Thank you very much, my name is Chris Batris, I'm a proud resident of Queens, and a voter-union member of Carpenter's Union. I stand before you today to advocate for job creations, families sustaining wages at the Willis Point Soccer Stadium Project. This endeavor presents a remarkable opportunity, not just for economic growth, but for the betterment of the entire community. First and foremost, let's recognize the power of the good jobs. There's not, there's not just about paychecks, they're about dignity, stability, and prosperity for our families. By ensuring that the jobs created at the Willis Point Soccer Stadium are high-quality, we're not only securing a brighter future for ourselves, but also for generations to come. Moreover, investing in good jobs is investing in our community's well-being. When workers are treated fairly and compensated justly, just can contribute more meaningful to our local economy. They can afford to shop in our businesses, invest in our schools, and strengthen the fabric of our neighborhoods. But this isn't about economics, it's about values. As a union member, I know firsthand the importance of fairness, equality, and opportunity. By standing up for good jobs at the Willis Point Soccer Stadium, we're standing up for these principles. We're saying that every worker deserves respect, every family deserves security, and every community deserves prosperity. So let's seize this moment to build something truly remarkable. Let's ensure that the jobs created at the Willis Point Soccer Stadium Project are not just any jobs, but good jobs. Jobs that uplift our community, empower our workers, and inspire our future. Together, let's make this vision reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I want to give the floor to Councilmember Moya.
Thank you, Chair, it's just a quick comment, I just want to say to my union brothers and sisters, you're just not building a structure. You're building something that is going to be there for generations to come, where you can actually point to your children and your grandchildren and say, "I helped build that stadium. I transformed this area that was once the Valley of Ashes, that was an area where the junkyards used to exist, and now you've made a difference to creating a brand-new neighborhood for the first time in New York City in four decades." And it couldn't have been done without that support that we have received from the community and the tireless effort that always comes in from our union brothers and sisters, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we're, your excuse, thank you. So now we're gonna go to the online testimony, so I'm going to call on Jenny Lando, Washington Torres, Sergio Munoz, and Chelsea Quito. We're gonna first start with Jenny Lando. Jenny, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Starting time.
Jenny, if you can hear me, you may begin. Okay, if we don't have Jenny, can we go to Washington Torres?
Starting time.
Hi, this is Jenny, I was just promoted.
Oh, go ahead, Jenny.
Sorry. Hi, good afternoon Chairperson Riley and other committee members, my name is Jenny Lando. I'm a native New Yorker, and I've lived in three of the five boroughs. I currently reside in the story in Tiffany Caban's District 22. I'm a parent and an educator and a dedicated and passionate supporter of
I'm hearing the other person, if I'm supposed to speak or what? No, no, just, just wait one second, Mr. Torres, we're gonna go with Jenny, okay? We'll come right back to you after.
I strongly support the Phase Two part of the Willis Point Project. In 2014, while my two young daughters and I were watching the World Cup, we saw an ad for an MLS team coming to New York City. I turned to my husband and said, "We are going to become a fan family," and he turned to me and said, "I don't like soccer." So, we only bought two full-season tickets, and I alternated which kid came to games with me, and now I'm going to season-ticket holder for 10 years, and we are still happily married. Since our first home opener to the most recent, this past weekend, we, my family, and many other NYCFC supporters have been hoping for our own stadium. Our boys in blue deserve it, even when they are not winning games, and especially after bringing the MLS Cup to New York City in 2021. Community Board Seven did their due diligence, Queensborough President Richards carefully determined how to strengthen the Willis Point Plan, Dan Garodnick and the City Planning Commission approved it, and now, after providing testimony to all of them, I am here to ask you to help us build our own stadium, and a new public school, and more affordable housing in Queens, and a hotel, and even new streets. How often do you get this opportunity? One which would come with a world-class soccer team, and an organization which has already invested a decade of good work here. I work at a Queens public school and bring many of our parents and students to NYCFC games annually. I'm hopeful this project will bring the beautiful game to more young people and families in our city. As well, the proximity of a K-8 school near a professional soccer stadium can only lead to some interesting career day and community service opportunities. As a lifelong New Yorker, I can say that this project will unequivocally help make my community, my borough, and my city stronger, and I hope that the city council votes to keep the Willis Point Project forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next we'll hear from Washington Torres.
Starting time.
Hello, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Hello, New York City Council Subcommittee, Zoning and Franchises, my name is Washington J. Torres. I speak to you today as a loud and proud, born and raised New Yorker and resident of 400 years old Queens, New York. I'm also a husband, a father, a registered voter, a veteran of the United States Navy, and a fellow civil servant with the New York City Fire Department, FDNY, and a proud founding member of New York City Football Club, also known as NYCFC. I'm in full support of approving the Phase Two redevelopment of Willis Point Project, which includes, among other things, a new school, the construction of affordable housing, and the NYCFC Stadium. Queens is the world's borough, and soccer is the world's sport. It's only fitting that NYCFC's home be located in Queens. I strongly urge you to recommend
Mr. Torres, you're breaking up.
Well, on Willis Point Project, we need construction of new school
Mr. Torres, we can barely hear you, you're breaking up.
Many people know the city of London, but only the neighborhood of Wembley in London is because of Wembley Stadium. Many people know the city of Barcelona, but the only people, the only reason to oh no, I'll try my best, but when that area is known globally, then the local market, the local government sure, I don't know if I have a bad communication. Can you, can you hear me now? Hear me now?
You're going in and out, but if we can't hear you, you could always submit written testimony to us as well. Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Sergio Munoz. Sergio, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Hello, everyone, I am Sergio Munoz, I'm Queens resident, an architect, and a local and small business owner, and also very proud founding member of New York City Football Club. The proposed project for the new community, including the stadium, is already a positive impact in the community, even before it is approved. Something great happening already, the improvement of the area, the contamination, and the programs that the club have with the local schools and nightlights. Also, great benefit for the future, thousands of construction of permanent jobs, local hiring practices, it's mean that a lot of Queens residents will be able to live and work in a brand-new neighborhood. Local business opportunity and big opportunities helping to expedite a new police represent. The fact that it's surrounded by public transportation, it makes the perfect location for the stadium. The fact that we will have an average of 17 to 25 games per year will not generate a major schedule coordination with the Mets. Games will not be at the same time as the City Field and the NYCFC new stadium. The stadium will provide community spaces, city square, where the community will have access to recreational and relaxing areas while no soccer games are in progress. Also, it will serve as a team headquarters, so it will be a continuous use during the entire year. Since the stadium is only 25,000 seats, we can expect less impact compared to a Mets game. Also, we already played some games at the City Field without major impact, that the area is accustomed to handle at the time of the games. The stadium will be sustainable, including solar panels generating electricity continuously. All the energy generated and not used for the stadium will be sent back to the Connecticut Center grid, so it can be redistributed in the neighborhood. No major battery storage will be required for the stadium. Hello?
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Chelsea Quito.
Starting time.
Chelsea, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Hi, I think the committee room is muted, so I don't know if you called
I can hear you.
My apologies, okay, I'm on screen, hello. Hi, my name is Chelsea Quito, I was born and raised in the South Bronx by amazing, hard-working Ecuadorian parents. I joined the City and the Community Foundation proudly supported by New York City Football Club when I was 17, and I have been actively involved for a little over six years now. I gained numerous opportunities through City and the Community programming, leading to my nomination as recipient of the ESPN Billie Jean King Humanitarian Award in 2020. I am honored to say that I have served as a volunteer, summer soccer block program, and after-school coach, youth leadership council leader, young leader training coordinator, it's a mouthful, and currently, I work part-time with the club as special projects lead at CITC Foundation. I am truly touched by all the help I've received from the CITC Foundation and the club since the beginning. Looking ahead, I'm filled with hope and excitement about the many people we're going to help and change for the better through our work together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, there being no questions, this applicant panel is excused. The last applicant panel that we are going to hear from is David Vasquez, Jennifer Kizizeta, and Zan Cambiro, I'm so sorry if I butcher your name. We'll begin first with David Vasquez. David, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Starting time.
David Vasquez, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Starting time.
We're just gonna go on pause real quick.
Hi, sorry, the committee room is muted, so I can't hear anything, I don't know how to
Hi, Chelsea, if you can hear me, please bear with us just one second, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Technical difficulty. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, everyone, we're just having technical difficulties, we're just trying to figure it out, and then we're gonna resume. We should have just one more panel to testify, and then we should conclude, all right? Just give me one second.
This is a test on Zoom to confirm that you can hear the committee room.
Zoom host can hear you, thank you.
Thank you. I'm now calling on David Vasquez. David Vasquez, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Starting time.
Mr. Vasquez, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, so thank you, everyone. You know, you've heard a lot already today about the affordable housing, the common space, the hotel, and besides that, you know, the club has done a lot of work for the community already, like the mini pitches built around the city. I mean, besides the stadium being privately funded, which is a huge change to recent deals that we've seen in the state and surrounding states. You know, instead of having a team threatening to leave the area, they don't get required subsidies, we have a team more than willing to invest in the community, they reside it. But beyond all of that, I just want to speak on an intangible benefit, which is how it brings New Yorkers together. You know, I've been fortunate to follow this team from its inception, because of this team, I've met hundreds of fellow New Yorkers I otherwise wouldn't have met. And these aren't just some like acquaintances that I see a couple times a year, these are people who have gotten me through loss-of-life situations, recovering from traumatic injuries. These are the people I had at my wedding. In my experience, fans have been extremely welcoming to newcomers and continue to have new people come to matches. I mean, recently, we've even started noticing a new generation of fans popping up, which speaks to the welcoming nature of fans, and it bodes well for the team's future. You know, last year, Gallup and Meta conducted a joint study, the results of which stated that nearly one in four people worldwide feels very or fairly lonely. This team is the reason why so many of our fans don't fall into that category. You know, results on the pitch aside, they've created and fostered this community. You know, results on the pitch aside, they've created and fostered this community. Uh I'm proud to support this project and I look forward to the day that we can further share our love of this club and city with others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Jennifer Kiseida. Jennifer, if you can hear me, uh please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council members. It's an honor to be on this call. My name is Jennifer Casada, founder and CEO of Digital Moda. At Digital Moda, we specialize in assisting businesses across various industries and bringing their ideas to life. Particularly in the garment manufacturing industry. And I am proud to express my support for this remarkable project. During the challenging times of the pandemic, Digital Moda collaborated closely with New York City Football Club. Leveraging our production expertise to manufacture essential personal protective equipment for the city of New York. Witnessing NYCFC's unwavering commitment to serving the city and residents was truly inspiring. Their dedication to sustainability as demonstrated by repurposing their jerseys to create PPEs. During the height of the COVID nineteen crisis exemplifies their values. As a native New Yorker and a small business owner, I can attest NYCFC's effectiveness in supporting local communities. And entrepreneurs through various initiatives such as grant programs, strategic partnerships. Their genuine efforts to uplift small businesses resonate deeply with me. And my parents immigrating to this country from Ecuador with the singular goal to make a positive impact on their community. Both here and abroad, I am proud to know and feel that I'm following in their footsteps through collaborating with NYCFC. Not just during the pandemic, but on ongoing efforts to support other small businesses. Small businesses are the lifeblood of New York City and they continue that partnership. Underscoring their commitment to the city by adding onto the en- entrepreneur ecosystem. In conclusion, I hold heartily endorse New York City FC. On this project and their endeavors to foster community engagement, sustainability and support for small businesses. With this historical project, a historical project that'll continue on for generations. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Zan Cambiro. Zan, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin. And excuse me if I butchered your name.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, my name is Chan Cambiero. Um I'm uh, I have been running youth soccer programs in Queens for thirty-six years. I was an educator with the New York City Department of Ed for thirty-one of those years. It was my intention to be uh at uh at the City Council this morning, but because that my program is about to start here in Flushing. Uh I had to uh do it, do it online. A- as a matter of fact, my kids are coming in, just wait a second guys. I'm sorry for this, kind of, it was kind of delayed today. Uh New York City has been supporting our soccer programs since, since the inception in twenty fifteen. That first year, uh they already helped us uh get equipment that was badly needed at the time. Uh other examples of things that they have done for us is they provided coaching for us, they've given us league support, summer jobs uh to the kids, internships. Opportunities for our players to become uh coaches themselves. And free tickets to uh to New York City FC games, including this past Saturday, we had about a hundred kids at the uh, at the game. Um and, and just recently, just a month ago, and uh New York City FC started the Saturday Night Live programs at our Flushing campus, which is. Wonderful uh new experience for our kids. Providing opportunities for our young students to grow up as responsible adults is what New York City FC is all about. Soccer is a wonderful, healthy, safe activity that teaches kids how to relate to each other in positive ways. And provides a platform for more fulfilling life. Soccer transforms children's lives for the better. And no matter what they choose as a career, it really contributes to them becoming productive members of society. A local soccer stadium is something that, that is built for them and for their, and, and for the coming generations. We really, really welcome in Flushing. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Zan. And wanna pause because we have one more person who's gonna testify. Okay, it looks like we have two more panels that wanna testify. So, thank you all for being patient. Uh the next panel I'm gonna call up is Jennifer Rodriguez, Ingrid Oskel. And Jenny Salinas and Evan Hooks. If you can hear me, Jennifer Rodriguez, you may unmute and you may begin.
Starting.
Hi, good afternoon. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh my name is Jennifer Rodriguez and I was born and raised in this community. Um I wanna thank um and I do approve this project in my community. It's a great opportunity for our growing children in this community and uh more jobs and equal. Housing for our families. Um I wanna thank um Councilman Francisco Moya. For supporting uh my daughter's school Pioneer Academy. And our community, our mixed-race community in Corona, Queens. Um I do approve this project, um more opportunities and jobs for our growing children. Um for teenagers that are planning to uh go to high school. And have a side job to um support for their books and um their education. I wanna thank uh everyone that's listening and I do approve this project in my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we hear from Ingrid Oskal. Ingrid, if you can hear me, you can unmute and begin. Thank you, Ingrid. Next we're gonna hear from Jenny Salinas. Jenny, if you can hear me, please unmute. Jenny, if you can hear me, please unmute. Okay, until we hear from Jenny, uh we'll hear from Evan Hooks. Evan, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Evan Hook, um from East Almhurst. Uh do support, definitely support this project. Um glad to see the um, the, the uh jobs that it'll bring into the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I believe we do not have Jenny online, so we're gonna move into the next panel. The next panel will consist of Samir Mulik, Jason Osborne, and Oswaldo Guzman. Uh we'll begin first with Samir Mulik. Samir, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Hello, uh can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Samir.
Hi, what's up guys? It's Samir. Uh uh like, I'm in favor for this Willis Point project. Um I'd like to share some experiences as a City and the Community leader. I remember when I was fifteen walking down my neighborhood that there was NYCFC coaches in um, in a high school near me. Uh I was thrilled thinking that it's tryouts and I might make it pro there, so I walked up. And it was actually a Saturday Night Lights program, uh a set, a program where City and the Community offers free soccer. Uh for young people like me. Uh immediately joined knowing that it was NYCFC and this is the real deal. Uh also, so after joining this program, uh I got exposed with different other programs with NYCFC that are career oriented like. YLC, Youth Leadership Council, where it's a council where young leaders like me. Uh get mentored and enhance their career oriented skills, their leadership skill, skills. Their cr- critical thinking skills. Um uh YLC also enhance, uh exposed me with other trainings. Like young leadership training where e- even more in-depth enhanced my uh leadership skills. And critical thinking and coaching skills as well, which New York City Football Club and City and the Community provided. Uh free coaching and uh job opportunities. One in specific is called Soccer Block. It's a six-week program. Where uh I get to coach little um kids ages s- six to twelve. Um it's a great way where young leaders could earn money and really pursue their passion. Also, um now I'm an intern, actually right now, uh let me see. See, I'm an intern. This is actually crazy. I never thought I would ever be an intern. At New York City Football Club and now I'm a community development intern, which is absolutely crazy. Um. I get to mentor, so uh mentor people, host fundraisings. Um it's crazy and I'm so happy to be here.
Hope you get a promotion, Samir.
Thank you.
Uh next we'll call on Jason Osborne.
You may begin. Good afternoon, subcommittee members, uh Councilmember Moya. Uh my name is Jason Osborne. I'm here to offer my support. And to the project in two capacities. I'm a proud resident of downtown Flushing, uh Community Board Seven. Um secondly. Uh here to represent on behalf of the Community Preservation Corporation. We're a nonprofit affordable housing. And community develop, our community revitalization company based in New York City. We are longtime partners with HPD and HCR. To finance affordable housing throughout the state and now across the country. Uh in my work as a um, as a lender, I, I financed affordable housing throughout the city for the past ten years. A proud alumni of New York City Housing Development Corporation and very excited to see the first phase close. Uh with HDC and HPD last November. Um on a personal level. Living in downtown Flushing, I've seen the rich communities there of Corona and Flushing. And how those uh community members represent deep uh soccer cultures throughout the world. So this is a ve- a very fitting site and a perfect site uh for a soccer stadium. Growing up or being in Flushing for the past ten years, I've created a family here. I have a four-year-old son who is uh hopefully attending. Uh PS twenty or two forty-four Q, uh which I'll know this month actually, uh for those parents out there. Um my son attends NYC Soccer Kids Program for the past uh two years, uh which receives discount tickets from the club. Um and I've seen my son develop over the past two years, uh which has been amazing to see him develop as a player and a member of the community. We attended the home opener last weekend despite the rain and difficulty with the weather. Um and this is a very special uh thing, me, me and my son have uh been, been a part of uh since the club has been founded. Um and my son's been born as well. On a professional level, uh this site creates uh. A rare opportunity for affordable housing at a, at a large scale. Thank you. Forty years. Uh thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And lastly, we'll hear from Oswaldo Guzman. Oswaldo, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Yes. Mi nombre es Osvaldo Guzmán, presidente del Ecuadorian Civic Community de Nueva York. Esta organización está funcionando en Corona. Qué importante que es fortalecer todos estos proyectos grandes que van en beneficio de la comunidad. Aquí en Queens. Con estas viviendas de bajo eh para las personas de bajo income. Es importante. Además, la construcción del estadio será en beneficio. De niños, adultos, de jóvenes que se dedicarán a hacer deporte, que es lo más importante en estos momentos. Eh qué importante es felicitar al concejal Moya por este gran proyecto que va siempre en beneficio de la comunidad. Es u- es un proyecto que dará gran impacto para toda la comunidad. Eh habrá trabajos para muchas personas que estén interesadas en la. Que trabaja en la comunidad. El estadio está en la mejor parte de localizado para la recreación de todas las personas. Un agradecimiento nuevamente a las autoridades y principalmente al concejal Moya. Por este gran trabajo que realiza por la comunidad de todo Queens. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have another person. Is this the last one, Andrew? Um the last person we're gonna hear from is Aretha Wareham. Um Aretha, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin. Aretha, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Hi, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Aretha.
Sorry. Yes, um my name is Aretha Wareham. I've been a longstanding um resident. Over forty years in East Almhurst. And um that Willetts Point area has always been an eyesore. This is a long overdue project. Yes, I approve it. There's been problems with flooding over there, berms, garbage. I am for economic development, um affordable housing, senior apartments and. Um jobs. So yes, I solely truly support this project.
Thank you, Ms. Aretha. Um is there anyone else that wants to testify on the Willetts uh Avenue project? Um whether online, remote, or in here in person, we're, will stand at ease. Until we uh confirm that no one here is testifying.
No chair, there is no one uh further sign up online or in person to testify regarding this Willetts proposal.
There be no other members uh of the public who is to testify on the preconceived LUs to Willetts Point Two. Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use and other council staff. And Sergeant Oswald participating in today's hearing. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.